For ninety seven forty North Bedford Road. Anybody here to speak on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just questioning proceedings.
What's your question?
Changing of zoning from R one to any else be for voters as citizens.
I think it has to come through here first, though.
Yeah, but it goes to council first, I believe.
Before the vote.
Those are the council first. I think we were in the wrong area. I just talked about my... What's your next BZA? Okay, so when would be the one in April if I got an application? So... Yeah, I'm wondering when the app... I know you sent me something about when the application would need to be in. Oh, is it planning? You think we can make the April meeting?
Go ahead.
Under eleven forty one oh one of the Planning and Zoning Code, initiation of amendment, amendments to the zoning ordinance can be initiated in the following manner. There's three choices. The third choice is by filing of an application by one or more of the owners or leasees of the property within the area proposed to be changed or affected by the proposed amendment or supplement with the planning commission. So I think it's proper that the applicant can apply here and the planning commission would make a recommendation to council who then holds a public hearing and ultimately acts on the application and then it is put by charter to the vote of the people.
I agree with that. I want to come to council first, I believe. That's okay. What Mr. Frans is...
It could go to council first. Option B is by introduction ordinance by council or a member of council and then refer to the planning commission. So it's option two of three options.
I guess I'll open up. Is there any additional counts from the public on this issue? There's no other public to speak on this. No campaign motion to adjourn the public's turn?
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing is closed.
So we're gonna probably table it and do that. I may have to call you and get an application for the BZA because I think I'm in the wrong area. Do you need me to say something on the record or? Yeah, now we have two tabled in front of you guys. Don't you love us? How are you tonight? Do you know how many Viladas are in our lodge in Macedonia? We have a lodge hall off of Shepherd Road. There's a ton of Viladas. We have five Tony Viladas. We designate them by the city they live in. Parma, Ridgefield, Mayfield Heights. A Tony Vilada?
No.
Carrero? Tony Carrero? No. Yeah. I'm gonna bring the hat. Next time I'm here, when I withdraw these, I'll bring it in to you, show you how many Viladas we have. There's a lot of Tonys in the lodge, too. You know, the only thing I think I'm missing soon, and I don't know if you fax it is, is the application.
Yeah.
For BZA.
Yeah. It should follow how we...
Rachel? Will she email it to me?
How you get the application?
Okay, great. So call Rachel, same phone number, though, or whatever, or ask for building. Yeah, great. Great, so we're good to go. We're typically...
We have one right here, right? There you go.
So do you need me to do anything or no?
No.
Okay, great. Great, okay, thank you, guys. So now we have two tabled in front of you, but if the board zoning appeals goes awry, we'll be back. Okay, nice seeing you. Thanks, guys. Thanks, too.
So I did not...
How you doing, Mr. Bell?
Great.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you have to follow this.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think so for the signage. It's kind of like combination of regular...
It started with, I don't know.
It was kind of juridic with that one.
Yeah.
No idea. That was before I knew it. But I think that it says you can use combination of regularity.
Yeah, I think that property...
Yeah. Glad.
Well, Highland isn't...
I don't take Highland around.
On your side, anybody go through one end.
Okay.
Where you go through the mall.
Yeah. South of...
Yeah. Yeah, oh, God. You're up there.
Depending if they cut an easement into Twister Road because...
Two thousand and nine road.
Yeah. That's what they do. Maybe they... Guys did that a few years ago. I think the tolls are the same operation. My house is a little bit smaller. It's out of view, so...
Yeah. It's hitting nowhere.
Yeah, they gotta go like...
It's not gonna run. It is not gonna run.
But Hudson died, or it's not gonna run.
Yeah. There's some sewers in the valley. And on... Well, there's even a couple sections of valley in there between here and Highland.
Was there a couple sections of that?
Yeah. Yeah, I think he's in a block Shepherd. On that end of town. Shepherd, South eighty-two, with those...
Warren Drive. No sewer.
And on north...
There's anything sewer.
Michael's Auto Park.
Oh, yeah.
Michael's Auto Park. Here is the last property. Go from north to west.
Yeah. Lives up there.
Oh, really? Yeah.
And then you're a little stretch of...
And I didn't know there was a little part in the middle of that area.
Yeah.
There's a forest in that alley here. Goes all over you.
All the way to Hudson, but yeah.
And it was pleasant all the way there. Wherever it goes, the island.
Down.
Cleveland. Maybe it goes that far, but...
Well, it ties in on the other side, probably Canal, where it runs down there. But yeah. Yeah, that was quite the project when they did that.
Yeah.
Their home new station is down on Kind Field, West...
Is that where it is?
Yeah.
Fifty years.
Yeah.
I mean, I was...
Yeah.
And I didn't know there was a little part in the middle of that area.
Yeah.
There's a forest in that alley here. Goes all over you.
All the way to Hudson, but yeah.
And it was pleasant all the way there. Wherever it goes, the island.
Down.
Cleveland. Maybe it goes that far, but...
Well, it ties in on the other side, probably Canal, where it runs down there.
But yeah.
Yeah, that was quite the project when they did that.
Yeah.
Their home new station is down on Kind Field, West...
Is that where it is?
Yeah.
Fifty years.
Yeah.
And we're not doing anything with that.
I called Rachel and told her to give you a shot. I had to dig in.
Well, they had a hard time. They had a hard time. About my property, because AT&T lines.
Point.
Yeah, I think they had a hand dig on that. And there's a control pump line through there.
AT&T lines.
It cut that.
So you think those were planted up front?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Well, I think Joe did.
See, I was just... Or maybe he did, but like, I'm primarily...
I think he was.
Yeah.
Was it?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Maybe.
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 Okay.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay.
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 Yeah.
So, and then you're a little stretch of...
Yeah.
And I didn't know there was a little part in the middle of that area.
Yeah.
There's a forest in that alley here.
Goes all over you.
All the way to Hudson, but yeah.
And it was pleasant all the way there.
Wherever it goes, the island.
Down.
Cleveland.
Maybe it goes that far, but...
Well, it ties in on the other side, probably Canal, where it runs down there.
Yeah.
But yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was quite the project when they did that.
Yeah.
Their home new station is down on Kind Field, West...
Is that where it is?
Yeah.
Fifty years.
Yeah.
And we're not doing anything with that.
I called Rachel and told her to give you a shot. I had to dig in.
Well, they had a hard time. They had a hard time.
I was just gonna stop about my property.
AT&T lines.
Point.
Yeah, I think they had a hand dig on that. And there's a control pump line through there.
AT&T lines.
It cut that.
So you think those were planted up front?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay.
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 That's the first one.
Kinda odd what we're trying to do now. I understand.
Saint George, what's wrong?
No.
Yeah.
I thought all they wanted was store equipment.
Okay.
A bid to...
Right.
I don't know.
Call the order, the red discussion, March nineteen twenty eighteen, planning commission meeting. Who calls?
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Poser?
Yeah.
Mr. Westbrook?
Here.
Mr. Sheabone?
Here.
Mr. Vilada?
Here.
All right, so first item is approval of February twenty, February twelve twenty eighteen meeting minutes. We'll do the other one separately. So we'll talk through those. Any comments, any thoughts? Bye, Chris. Okay.
I was absolutely...
Okay. Any point for approval?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Substate.
And then approval of the meeting minutes from February twenty sixteen, special meeting. Any comments on that?
I'm working on the approval.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay, the first item they have asked to be tabled, this is the change, zoning change from R one residential family classification to R two residential family in ninety seven forty North Bedford. They've asked to be tabled. I'd suggest the motion to be tabled until the next meeting.
I'll move to soak tables.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, this one up to you. Next one is Greco, is it from us there, right? Eighty-six forty-nine freeway drive. You and anybody else, if you want to still come on up, pull up, pull chairs.
I have some, that kind of... Site plan of some... A few of those.
Is this different from what you... Is this thing?
Yes.
They should all...
Oh.
Unless it's different. If you change it, then they don't.
Same.
Well, since it's made up.
Can I ask?
Yeah, my name's Kevin Kelly. I'm there.
Kevin?
Sounds great.
For the development?
Yes.
Craig Hastings.
So, you guys want to give us a pre-vote review of what's, what you're planning here in sight?
All right, so, yeah, just tell you a little bit of autograph. I mean, we're a temporary utility divider, so we're preusing temporary generators, temporary air conditioners, temporary chillers, temporary air compressors, and when a facility loses power, it loses their air compressors, will provide that temporary backup. So what we have going on in this facility is just some storage of that temporary equipment, some maintenance of that temporary equipment. So as far as the improvement, there's a building with a fence, and within that fence to get back in is gated area, so we're gonna bring in a planner box and progress plan up and provide to provide a shield for the backyard. We have about sixty locations throughout North America. Internationally, we're a lot of two billion dollar company. We do defense like the Olympics, we provide it on the power, temporary power, the PGA championship, they're all on.
Okay. We got some comments. Chris, should I go over your comments?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. The applicant is essentially hit on the three areas, well, two of the three areas that I speak to in my March tenth memo. The applicant is proposing outdoor storage, as he indicated, generators and such, and it's my understanding those generators would be stacked, just not sure what height they'd be stacked to, so I think that's something the commission would want to know with this request. The other, regarding the stacking in the footprint, then, the site plan isn't real clear about where it would be stored. It'll need to be behind the rear of the existing building. The site plan should be revised to reflect the actual location, the footprint, and again, where it'll be stored. I'd say the biggest issue most likely in this case is section eleven seventy-one point one-one E four A of the planning zoning code requires, generally requires hard surface for the storage area, and I think the applicant's requesting to use the existing conditions, which are asphalt bindings for that rear lot area. I think the code is clear that it requires a hard surface, so that's an issue I think that needs to be discussed with the applicant. And then applicant mentioned landscaping. I had just suggested some landscaping, a landscaping plan be accompanied with proposal to indicate what's being proposed and then how the outdoor storage area would be screened from view from the street.
All right, thank you. Ms. Floyd, any comments?
You know, I didn't have any written comments when I initially reviewed the plan there. It appeared to just be an application for outdoor storage, no site improvements, so as such, I didn't put anything in writing, but in listening to Brian's comments, I, one thing I would mention is if the parking lots, if we're adding a paved surface, then our stormwater management requirements would, would come into effect, and our requirements are pretty standard, the same you would find in most communities, so.
Chris, can I? Mr. Bell?
The only thing is, we'll have to do an occupancy inspection prior to moving in, and there is a key switch on that gate to allow part of apartment access after hours so that we can gain entry without damaging the gate.
Okay. Do we have to ask any of them?
Yes.
When it comes to stacking of the equipment, you know, when you're putting the stack of generators, just, you know, normal, or regulations going down the street, anything on a trailer, we can't be above thirteen foot, six inches, so we're not gonna stack anything above that height. But wouldn't, we might have one or two pieces of equipment at that height, but everything else is really about eight foot or under.
That's well below the height of the building.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Do you have any problem with having all the storage in the building?
Um...
It comes behind the landscape there. I see where the landscape is. Some trench there.
So not, not just, you weren't planning just the blue area, you planned this whole area?
What is, what is the blue area?
So behind the building. You know, anywhere behind.
Yeah, yeah, nothing will be in front of that building.
I, I, just wanted to get the attention, not, Mr. Frans, are you talking about physically behind the building or behind the edge of the building? Are you talking? This is the building, that building here.
Behind the edge of the building.
Okay, so, I think you're referring to like, this area more than, less than...
It says to be in the rear, rear yard effectively, and you could screen that, that area.
Yeah.
Fencing's allowed. I think the code allows up to ten feet for fencing, so there's, there's options that you could, I just encourage you, document that on, you know, a landscape plan, the fencing and door combination.
One side had some fencing on it, the other side it was kind of an access way between the two buildings, but we wouldn't store anything in front of the building. Most, most of things would be behind the building. I can't see if anything to the right of that building because you have that, that truckway that comes through the gate, so it's hard to take up some spots.
If your, if your plan is to use this area here, which is pretty much everything behind the back edge of the building, I would think you probably would need to do probably some more landscaping beyond just this little row up here, probably something on the side. It's, just for the visibility of the country, those, those, particularly the side, I think.
This is a G?
Yeah, it's a general, I feel. Thank you.
Did you, hard surface? Okay, okay with doing?
Actually, no, the back surface is currently asphalt, higher sided, certain area, and so it is, it was used for trucks.
I don't think that's really considered a hard surface, though. Yeah, we're talking kind of green or asphalt.
Okay, wait there.
Pardon me?
But it's acceptable.
What is there is acceptable for what we store.
So there'd be a bigger cost for us to take about.
I understand, but I think that's a requirement of the code to have that, isn't it? Correct?
Yeah, it's eleven seventy-one E four A of the code requires hard service.
So you're giving me something to say, it's just hard surface, it's concrete or that.
Yeah, I mean, this issue's come up to the planning commission a number of times in the past, and applicants have, you know, desired to use asphalt bindings, the commission has not allowed that pursuant to the code. Understand it's obviously, it's a, you know, it's a cost to pave that area, but, and the city wants, wants you guys, they want the business to come in there, but it struggles with that, you know, that fine line of trying to improve properties and then have occupancies at the same time, so, you know, it's just something that, you know, felt pretty strongly about over the years and have required of other applicants.
Kevin? Is, is a variance allowed if they really don't want or can't afford it? Are they allowed a variance for, for the asphalt thing, or is that not variance, variable? Can they apply for a variance, put it that way?
Yeah, the, a variance from the code is always allowed because it's the administrative relief provided under the planning and zoning code, so if the applicant chose to or had a desire to try to seek a, an exception or a variance, they could do that from the board
The stacking of the equipment, you know, we prefer the stacking of generators. You know, normal or regulations going down the street, anything on a trailer, we can't be above thirteen foot six inches. So, we're not going to stack anything above that height. But wouldn't, we might have one or two pieces of equipment at that height, but everything else is really about eight foot or under.
That's well below the height of the building.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Um, do you have any problem with, with having all the storage in the building?
Um, it comes behind the landscape there. I see where the landscape is from the trench there and.
So, not, not just, you weren't planning just the blue area, you're planning this whole area.
What is, what is the blue area? Behind the building. Yeah, yeah, nothing will be in front of that building.
I, I, I just wanted to get attention, not, Mr. French, are you talking about physically behind the building or behind the edge of the building? Are you talking, this is the back building here.
Behind the edge of the building.
Okay, so, I think he was referring to like this area more than, less than.
It says to be in the rear, rear yard effectively, and you could screen that, that area.
Yeah.
Fencing's allowed, um, I think the code allows up to ten feet for fencing, so there's, there's options that you could, I just encourage you, document that on, you know, a landscape plan, the fencing and door combination.
On one side it had some fencing on it, the other side it was kind of an access way between the two buildings, um, but we wouldn't store anything, you know, in front of the building. Most, most of things would be behind the building. I can't see if anything would be to the right of that building because you have that, that truckway that comes through the gate, so it's hard to take up some spots.
If your, if our plan is to use this area here, which is pretty much everything behind the, back edge of the building, I would think you probably need to do probably some more landscaping beyond just this little row up here, probably something on the side. It's, just for the visibility, if there's anything else, doesn't plus, particularly the side, I think.
This is a G.
Yeah, it's a general, uh, building. Thank you.
Did you, uh, hard surface, okay, okay with doing?
Actually, no, the back surface is currently, I'm trying to ask all my estate, certain area, and so it is, it was used for trucks.
I don't think that's really considered a hard surface, though, the, you know, talking kind of greater asphalt.
Okay, wait there.
Pardon me?
But it's acceptable.
What is there is acceptable for what we store.
There'll be a bigger cost for us to take about.
I understand, but I think that's a requirement of the code to have that, isn't it? Correct?
Yeah, it's eleven seventy-one E four A, if the code requires hard servicing.
So, you can give me something besides just hard service and find this concrete or that.
Yeah, I mean, this issue has come up to the planning commission a number of times in the past, and applicants have, you know, desired to use asphalt writing, and the commission has not allowed that pursuit to the code. Understand it's obviously, it's a, you know, it's a cost to pave that area, but, um, and the city wants, wants you guys, they want the business to come in there, but it struggles with that, you know, that fine line of trying to improve properties, um, and then have occupancies at the same time. So, you know, it's just something that, um, you know, felt pretty strongly about over the years and have required of other applicants.
Kevin, is, is a variance allowed if they really don't want or can't afford it? Are they allowed a variance for, for the asphalt thing, or is that not variance, variable? Can they apply for a variance, put it that way?
Yeah, the, um, a variance from the code is always allowed because it's the administrative relief provided under the Planning and Zoning Code. So, if the applicant chose to or had a desire to try to seek a, an exception or a variance, they could do that from the Board of Zoning Appeals.
So, maybe if it's too expensive, they might try that alternate way of, I can talk them into it.
Okay.
Okay. So, I, I mean, I'm curious, Mary, do you think you want to try to go that route, or are you, are you creating a hard surface?
I think now, I think that the surface was accepted, I know that, that the code, but it's, it's, it's around, it hasn't been played in the past, it's in the rear of the building, so I'll have to make some decisions.
I'm a partner with Perdevailment as well. Oh, my partner, I'm sorry, Jerry Pruszewski, G R U S Z E W S K I. The, uh, the former user, owner of the building was per moving store. Obviously, there was storage all throughout the backside of that facility with their use. I understand the code's changed, use groups, use groups changed as well. Not only hard paved surface, but we're going to get into a completely different stormwater management program if in fact you require for that backlot to be paved as well. You, there's no, there's not enough property on that land to go ahead and pave that surface. So, with that, that creates hardship, not only the cost of it, but the inability to be able to do that as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And, and I think that's, those are all, you know, valid points. Unfortunately, this commission can't vary that requirement, um, but that's a very good argument to make, um, if you were to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Just unfortunately, this commission can't vary that requirement, it's, they just don't have the authority to do that.
Okay.
And then you had referred to additional landscaping outside of what was shown on the plan?
That's, that's what I was thinking, is, you know, maybe down the side or the south side, yeah, as you're coming to gate and down, down the south side.
That is a, that's, that's a completely fenced line that runs down there that is a privacy, a property separation between K guard gutters, I believe is on the other side, the other parcel, southern parcel. And they have their materials stored in their gravel storage area all the way up to that fence. Unless we were to go ahead and cut out part of a paved lot area to put landscaping in, which is kind of being counterproductive to what we're trying to accomplish there.
How's it counterproductive?
Uh, because now we're taking stormwater that is shedding across two stormlots and back, and now we're basically creating a dam in between two parcels.
With landscaping?
If you were putting a kind of a landscape mound there.
I don't think, you weren't looking for a mound, right? You were just looking for landscaping?
Landscaping of some sort. So, they're probably, I, I'm not sure, working planning, planning.
There's going to be a flower bed of our invitee is what they're proposing at the gate line right there.
Yeah.
So, that would be, that would be the division between the front and the back right on the gate line. The other thing would be if we were to just go ahead and cut in even just a level planting bed at all, whatever we plant in there, you know is never going to survive. You're going to salt this thing, you're going to snow plow it, you'll have no place to push the snow to, as well as you're opening up a paved surface, something with no curves, someplace for water to get underneath and for pavement to just fail.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think one of the things that, I'll clarify situation, you've got a little more of a scripted site plan, knowing what you plan on doing, where your store, where your storage area is, what is the limits that you're going to store, and where you propose to, what's the planning. Um, might even help to have somebody just take a look and say, oh, yeah, general drainage is this way, this way, this way, but there's no interference and people know exactly what you're doing, what you're proposing.
Sure.
The site plan here really doesn't tell me a whole lot here on the site.
Sure.
I actually blew the area and then I thought that was all going to be new paint, but it doesn't say that.
Right.
Okay, if you're going to do something like that, you should identify that in such a way, there's no question as to what you are doing and what you're proposing, that'll go a long way here and, and up to easily off.
Absolutely. Sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I also encourage you, as you look at landscaping in general, you know, a straight row of arbor Vitae won't work very long, they'll eventually die. If one gets a disease, they're all diseased, um, and then they, they tend to grow together. I mean, I know it looks good because it can make this straight wall of screening, but I just try to maybe be a little creative as you think about landscaping. There's other species that would be probably better to mix in there and just soften, soften that outdoor storage area. Um, I mean, those are things, I think, as the commission member pointed out, those are things that will help you in your, your case as you move forward, um, to, you know, to ultimately get your occupancy permit.
I guess, but it sounds like there's still some, some stuff to, decisions under your power to make, and decisions which direction to go, do you plan to go into this area, do you want to go with recommendations? Um, I think if this, this is probably on a table this.
Yeah.
Issue, and you're going to come back with, you know, to revise, a little bit revised plans and decisions and maybe you'll.
That way you won't have to pay another fee, I, I think, isn't that true with the table? You wouldn't start over here.
First thing you got to do is based on those counts, you make both of the board and.
When is the next board meeting?
Uh, Susan?
This Wednesday, but you can't make it to that one, so it would be one month from Wednesday. Probably Friday is the date of the plan.
I can have them in by Friday, that's not a problem, but it's a whole other month. Meet once a month.
I have to make a motion to table this to the next Planning Commission meeting following the appearance of BZA, that's the declaration, which is, my second. Anyway, you want to.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, um, my, my assumption is your motion also includes for the applicant to revise their plan as you were talking about?
Yes.
To be more specific with their outdoor storage, more specific with their screening, so you have some, some better details.
Okay, so let's say I was to make a motion, yeah, to table to the next Planning Commission following, the next BZA, they'll make appearance, uh, with, when they come back with more detailed plan.
We'll make notifications or propose grading plan with the existing grades are that are out there.
Storage areas.
Range detail, locate, storage area of exactly where they would be storing, uh, and we'll go ahead and consult with the landscape architect to see what else they would propose as far as in that landscape plan.
Yeah. It would also be helpful if you had like a written description of your outdoor storage, kind of what you're storing, the height limitations of your storage, as you sort of testified this evening, average at eight feet, maximum thirteen six, that would be helpful if you include that with your application.
Okay. Motion, second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item. Uh, signage from Keyan three eleven Highland Road. Hold the chair.
Hello?
Hi.
Pretty simple stuff for you.
All right, why don't you give us, or give, uh, we have a name?
Yeah, I have the next two, I'm Vince Deano with Blue Signs. The first property is three eleven Highland, it's an old motel six, all we're doing is swapping the signs out, we got bought out by Keyan, um, so we just need to change the faces on, same size, we're not changing anything else. We're actually getting rid of the reader message on it, the, um, pricing, we're just going to say Keyan, simple stuff.
Okay.
Pretty much identical, blue as well, as far as the color.
Um, we do have some comments, Mr. French, do you want to?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, request as the applicant stated is to replace some signage, includes a six by six or thirty-six square foot wall sign, a five point one seven by six point six seven foot sign, um, and that's a replacement panel on the existing ten foot tall pole sign, and then, uh, and that's thirty-four point four eight square feet, and then a four point six seven by five point seven five replacement panel on an eight foot tall existing pole sign as well, and that's just a little under twenty-seven square feet. Section eleven seventy-nine oh three F two of the Planing Zoning Code permits two square feet for each linear foot of building frontage. Um, the applicant's building frontage is a hundred and five feet, provides him with two hundred and ten square feet of identification signage. Additional area is permissible due to the size of property and configuration of site, however, um, the applicant is more than compliant with the area limitation. So, the, really the two issues or two concerns with the signage are the fact that it's located in the town center district and must comply with the requirements of chapter eleven seventy-two of the Planing Zoning Code. Specifically, colors for the sign must be harmonious with adjacent structures, signs in this case, and then pole signs are prohibited in the city pursuant to eleven seventy-nine oh five B four. However, um, the pole sign issue appears to be dealt with in eleven seventy-nine thirteen L three, which provides exceptions for non-conforming signs, to my knowledge, this is a non-conforming sign. Specifically, this code section states that non-conforming signs shall not be altered, modified, or restructured, other to comply with the chapter with the following exceptions. There's three exceptions, uh, the first being when an existing use has new ownership, which results in a change in name of the use or the business on the property. I believe that's the case here this evening.
Yeah, they were bought out by, by Keyan, it's a brand new order.
So, um, they have a change in ownership, which results in a change in name, so pursuant to eleven seventy-nine thirteen L three. Uh, it seems to me that the pole sign issue is a moot point, um, and then just leaves us with the color issue being located in the town center district. I suggest the commission consider red and white to match the colors of other sites in immediate neighborhood. Um, and that'd be something I think that the commission should talk to the applicant about, but the pole sign issue I think is dealt with in the code.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Chair. It's, uh, Miss, what do you think?
Well, just to make sure I understand, with the exceptions, that means with the change in name of pole sign would be allowed?
Um, that's my understanding. If you, if you read the way the code states regarding non-conforming signs, when an existing use has new ownership, which results in a change in the name of the use or business on the property, the sign can be altered or modified.
Okay.
Seems like one of the questions, that would be the color, then.
Yeah, that's their branded color, um, Keyan is pretty big in Minnesota, I guess. Um, they just started buying more locations here. There's another one, um, the same ownership bought Norwood Inn, which is on, in, um.
Boston Heights.
Yeah, Boston Heights, we just redid all those faces for the same, for the same owner, they have a couple of different, whatever their management company is, um, so that's the color that they have, and they want to keep it kind of similar to the pole and the structure of the actual existing sign, rather than having to redo the whole side, because they had to redo the whole sign, if you would say it's non-conforming, it would be, all they want to do is just replace the face to make it as conformable as possible.
Are you saying it's a standard color for the other two hotels?
For their brand, yeah, the Norwood Inn is similar in the blue, but, um, the Keyan brand is this blue and yellow for the most part.
I don't have an issue with the color, but I don't know specifically how, what color in that code, the old, blue is the old.
Well, the, the, the code speaks to the town center district and the architectural requirements, architecture standards in the town center district, and, um, I think it's reasonable if the commission wanted to require the red and white to match the colors of other signs in the immediate area, I think it's a reasonable thing to require in the town center district.
I think the point is if this were standing by itself somewhere, it would be not as big an issue with the color, but since there are other buildings around that conform with the color requirements, I think it's proved to be.
Right. Yeah, I think the only problem is that you're asking for a brand to change our whole brand, you know, and it's, they want to keep it as conforming with the existing structure, which is all blue as well. So, as you can see, all of the, all we're doing is taking the face out of the existing signs, and then poles, the pole skirts, the framing for every single one of the signs is already blue, even all of the awnings on the location are blue, all of the side, um, parking lot poles are blue, everything is blue, so it would almost throw off the whole balance, because as you can see on page three, that blue that the poles are surrounding it to protect the sign, the whole, all of the signs are blue, awnings blue, everything is blue, which is their, their brand.
Excuse me, does the other hotel around there, do they have, are they all red and white? There's another hotel, I think, Catacorner, that, uh, Highland, I don't think it is. And, and we've given exceptions to national brands before, I don't know if this is Keyan, I've never heard of it, but maybe it is a national brand.
I think recently we required red and white on Bob Evans, I think they have proposed different colors, and we've required them to go red and white as well.
I think that is their color.
Yeah, I think most of the Bob Evans.
Bob Evans that I know are all red and white.
And the branding guidelines, we have red in it.
If a Hilton Hotel came in, would we demand that they, everything be red and white?
I'm sorry?
If a Hilton Hotel were put up there, would we have to demand that they change their national color to red and white?
Well, I mean, this, this color issue continues to come up, and, uh, I mean, you know, we've set forth standards, um, in a lot of cases of red and white, and, you know, I'm sure if I looked up Keyan, I could find plenty of examples of Keyan where they don't have red and white, maybe that's an old color scheme, or where they do have red and white, and they don't have blue and yellow, so maybe it's an old color scheme and their new color package is blue and yellow, I, I don't know.
I, I did look them up, I can only find two other hotels, and I, I think they were this color, but I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure of that.
You know, other than, other than the color, the signs are, I think, are, are fine.
Yeah.
Keyan, they don't have red.
Chairman, for what it's worth, I'm looking at a picture of a Keyan in Sweets right now, the sign is red and white.
Oh, really? Where is that one? Is it Minnesota?
Yeah, Minnesota's the first one. You only do this one here?
I was trying to say again.
I said, I think the first, the other ones are in Minnesota, or that's where the main company that hires us to change up these ones are at.
But if they're red and white, what's the problem with doing this one red and white?
You'd have to change the whole structure of the building, you have awnings that are blue that aren't being replaced, you have all the pole signs that are all the, the parking lot poles that are protecting the poles that are all blue, and then you'd have to repaint or reface the whole entire pole skirt. I mean, it would have just, I mean, unless you guys want to keep all that blue, but then I think red, white, and blue, that one's blue. I think they picked the blue to kind of just keep it uniform, because the, um, other one is blue as well. This is the brand, the PMS colors are given to us by them, so all we did was create the design for what they provided for us.
Can you talk to them and see what the big, if it's a big, if it's a major problem?
I think you might be, because I think they might have manufactured the signs.
Oh.
Because the fact that when you buy, when you buy them, yeah, that's not your fault, no. But no, I mean, I can always bring it up to a red.
Red and white and blue.
Yeah, the only thing that was white, red, and the whole company had, and the motel, I worry.
You explained something in places, you said it was all your awnings are blue and painted, etc., but, but did you already do something?
No, no, the awnings are existing on the location, and then if you look at page three, there are some poles, um, that surround some of the signs that are also that, that are blue, those are existing as well, we didn't do anything with those, those are better.
Are we going to change it?
Yeah, all we're doing is taking the old faces out from the new faces in.
So, to go to the other color, it's a bigger project.
It's, it would cause, I mean, well, if you, I mean, or it's just going to kind of look ridiculous, I feel, but, I don't know.
Unless you want to follow what was already there, because red letters and the letter strips, that doesn't exist right now.
That may be.
Picture right here.
That may be, we can look like a motel with the red letters there.
Yeah, that's why.
If you put the red letters in there, you may not, maybe they're made old.
That might be a compromise.
It's a good time. What do you think on that one?
Yeah, I can always propose it to them, you know, I mean, I know when, a lot of these times when you get, when you buy the hotels, you're kind of getting a crutch legally.
You've got the red letters in there all added with the blue background.
Yeah, it's just a matter of how far they are along the process for the manufacturing, so if that, if it becomes an issue, then, I mean, I just know with the Norwood Inn one, when they had that one, there was a contract that had to be signed that they had to get the faces swapped out in a certain amount of time, so they pushed the gun on the manufacturing aspect, or they were going to be fined by the old, I think it was Clarion Inn, is who was there before, um, legally they had to do that with meetings like this with only once a month, it doesn't necessarily help that side of the, you know, so they tried to get that going as soon as possible to make it as conforming as possible to just pass it through here, which is probably what they thought they were getting done here, so.
Hmm.
So, if it was there before, all right, that's a good point, I mean, I think I can support the, the red, the red lettering and on the blue background, that may be a good compromise here, would you?
Can we get a conditional approval, as long as the company goes along with red letters on the blue sign, that we go along with this whole thing?
And then if they decide to keep it, or if the signs are ready or anything like that?
You'd ask for a variance, I guess, I guess that's what you'd do, just like the last one.
Yeah, ask for a variance, you got to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Because of the problem.
Okay.
If we're a national chain with every, you know, a whole bunch of them, the same way, but you looked it up, and I looked it up, but I forgot what it looked like, I guess it's red and, up in Minnesota there, it's all red and white or whatever, right? That's what you saw on there?
Yeah, the picture I had was a white sign with red letters.
Yeah.
On a stock.
So, it's, it's not really ruining their, their, their logo.
Awesome. Want to make a motion?
I, we, we approve the application condition, that the, the company is willing to change the sign, uh, instead of yellow and blue to, to red and blue.
I second that.
No?
Be specific, the letters.
The letters, the letters, yes.
The letters, take care of it.
I'll second that. Any more discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're here for the next one, say?
Yeah, Giant Eagle, Curbside Systems, and Curbside Express.
Giant Eagle, Curbside Express, I want you to.
So, this is just a set of white channel letters, you're going to be putting up for the new order online and come pick up your grocery delivery service.
Chris, would you like to go over your comments?
Could almost duplicate them for you, the area is fine, the green is not permissible. Um, this one's a little more, uh, a little easier to work with, the, this is in the crossings at Golden Lake, a much more defined shopping center, um, and again, the, the green background is not permissible, provided it was changed to meet the rest of the signage for the Giant Eagle has, I don't see any issue with the signage being approved.
Could almost duplicate them for you. The area is fine. The green is not permissible. This one's a little more, uh, a little easier to work with. The, this is in the crossings at Golden Lake, a much more defined shopping center. And again, the, the green background is not permissible, provided it was changed to meet the rest of the signage for the Giant Eagle has. I don't see any issue with the signage being approved.
Anybody else want to add?
Yes, so I think.
Well, I was going to say again, that one's one I did look up and that, Giant Eagle is a national chain and they're, are marketing this on websites and everything else. And that's for their express service seems to be all green and white. Is that true?
Yeah. And they have some directional signs they're putting in as well.
That, that does seem to be a national chain.
They've got a couple in there right now.
Yeah. And, uh, you know, we made a, a variance for Huntington. Huntington, green is their color too. And I know it was supposed to be red and white and all that, but, but we.
I think we gave them like an accent spot.
Yeah, we did, we gave a bit more, but I don't know if we could ask Giant Eagle to change their whole, uh, marketing campaign on express curbside service, which a lot of, uh, grocery stores seem to be going to. So, I'd be kind of in favor to let them, if we're allowed to, uh, let them have this change.
This one, I mean, it, it doesn't match the rest of the building. You know, they've got the red letters on the neutral background, um, on the rest of the building. And, Brian, is it, I mean, that specifically spelled out in the process of the things about the colors, is that?
Yeah, I think that, um, to any sort of an exception, would probably need to go to the JED board, since this is located in JED. Very similar to the Dunkin' Donuts issue.
Yes. Now, I want to look at this, uh, right, everything, in fact, both of the cities have red letters running right around it. At the end of this same building, I'm not showing the pictures, Huntington banks all in green, both letters are all in green down there, right on.
In, in this building?
Yeah.
This is a whole new service, as I understand it, for curbside service to show how fast it is and quick. And, uh, that's their national thing. You have to, I, I looked at their websites they have and it seems to be that's why they make it green. And I saw signs in their parking lot the same way Express directing them. They're all green too.
I saw the signs in the first one.
And, but, um, and I, I thought that we were allowed to vary, uh, that on the sign code here, although maybe they're at the JED, has something different. I mean, it's all in the JED. I, I don't know if that is, makes it all different or not, that we don't have any say so on that.
Yeah, within the Macedonia Commons, you have that ability. I, I don't know about on the crossing at Golden Lake.
Might not be right, yeah.
Yeah, that was something that the developer brought to the city, I think, in two thousand fifteen, fourteen or fifteen.
Eleven seventy-nine thirteen allows us, the planning commission, to do this, um, you know, to allow it. But you're right, the JED might be an entirely different place.
I have a question that has nothing to do with the color. The cars that are standing in the back for the pickup, if I'm seeing that correctly, or do you know, I know more signs. Is that where the cars are parking to wait to, to the grocery?
For sign, which ones?
Sign two and three.
Yeah, those are just like directional signs that are just going to be.
So, where's it directing them to?
It's just parking spots. Yeah, it's going to, yeah, at a parking spot. So, you just pull it in, call, let them know your name, and then they bring your groceries directly out to you.
So, there's going to be one of these signs at each parking space then?
Yeah, it's, it's a back-to-back sign, um, double-sided, so there's only going to be four parking spots, two signs total.
Mr. Pozar, the signs are actually already there in the parking lot.
Oh, okay.
In three?
Yes. And I think there might be a delivery one too. I think they have a delivery parking sign too. So, there's going to be three spots for customers to pull it and one spot for a delivery guy to pull it, load the groceries, and take it to wherever he's taking it.
Two points in service, one, how many signs would they actually put in here? And the other thing, what I know, we're thinking of, we're thinking of, here, and setting four traffic that way, you know, and lots of traffic coming and going here at the same time.
Yeah, Mr. Pozar, I was going to ask the same question of, of the applicant. Maybe he can help us out. Uh, to be clear, are all of, is all of the traffic for the curbside pickup going to be east of the Giant Eagle building or will any of it be on the north face of the Giant Eagle building? Because you were thinking the same thing I was, Mr. Pozar, that this could affect the Dunkin' Donuts plan.
So, they're, the way that they do their curbside is that wherever they put their channel letters set for curbside express is where they have their posted panels. So, they're all going to be in that location, all be east.
So, they'll all be on the east face of the building?
Correct, which would be the main side.
Okay. So, there's nothing on that north face?
Your photo, your photo shows sign five, which is on the north side mostly.
I think it's pointing to.
Yeah, it's pointing to the east side of the building.
Right here.
Oh, that, I, I see that, I see.
Yeah. I don't think they have any entrances on the north side for them to be able to see that there's anybody there.
Well, yeah, that, I'm, I'm not sure how they're setting up the, the curbside pickup. That, that's why I asked the question. Yeah, I guess I don't know if the groceries come out the east face or the north face.
Yeah, they come out the east, out of one of the, out of the entrance that's right under the curbside express.
And, and that's what the applicant's site plan does illustrate, that they're coming out the east face.
Personally, I think that, I think the letters should match. I just think they should be, it should match the rest of the stuff on the building because you'd be rather either on, you know, the neutral background, so it matches the rest of the, the site. And that's, and that's kind of the thing.
I agree with you. I, I think if it was a, it's a separate building, it'd be different, but I mean, you already have red signage on, on that building. And to change it to a different color, I think, would be kind of a disaster.
So, your point is they want it to stand out, like they want it to be, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. But I mean, whatever you guys say, I'm with them, so.
I would agree, so we have Huntington at the other end, but, you know, that's a separate building.
There says that there's a Huntington inside of Giant Eagle. And usually, like, I live in Lakewood, and they have a Huntington sign on that Giant Eagle building.
You don't know if your, your superiors would go along with this or not, or just, you'd have to ask them.
Yeah, I could ask them.
Then you might go for a variance again, like we were telling the last people, you almost have, I think it's a national marketing effort, including in Indiana.
Yeah, some of them, like the one that we're doing in the Sharden, is, um, I believe the sign itself is green and then they're painting all, there's three pillars under it, they're painting those completely green all the way around, but their facade's a little bit.
The whole idea is to make something different, a new way of doing grocery jobs.
Is that worrying about for anybody else? Huntington, on building? I don't remember either. Well, I, I personally like to, like to see it go red with, with, uh, white with a neutral background, it's currently on there, like the rest of the signage.
Can we do green?
No.
Painted green?
Right. It's just a line, hold up.
Well, we could, we could do the same.
I think we do, and if you want, you know, if they want this sort of, the JED, they're just, I think we have to stick.
Or they go for a variance like the last one.
If it would be a variance, it would be for the JED, the JED community to grant that it's not a real variance, I believe, and they have that for exact issue.
I mean, our board.
JED would be an exception.
It would be an exception, perhaps, that the general board could grant a thing.
Oh, okay. Well, I didn't, I got those rule, I didn't see anything about color signs in JED, but here we are, okay.
Was anyone making a motion?
And the sign needs to be put on a raceway?
Yes. Yeah. Chris, would you like to make a motion? Make a motion to approve of the change, uh, to red letters on white or neutral background?
On a raceway.
Me and all the other, uh, friends. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, so, as long as they're willing to change that, uh, I'd probably go with it.
Do you know where the JED, you know where the JED is or who?
No, I'm going to figure it out.
You have to call, call in and fight a argument over the JED. I'm not sure I know where it is either.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Who they are for.
Oh, it's representative.
Yeah. All right, next, Massage Envy signage. Can you get your name? Dan Berkey with Archer Sign. Can you have this? Yes, please. Yes. All right, want to, listen, what's going on here?
Massage Envy's moving into a new space there at the Macedonia Commons, like they're adding two sets of channel letters onto their, onto their building, one facing the parking lot, one facing, uh, the Royal Road, I believe it is. Yeah. And then, uh, change out the face on the existing monument sign, all to match their current corporate logo with, uh, corporate faces.
Go ahead.
Well, they say three times is a charm, right? So, um, same thing, area is fine. Um, when you subtract out America's Best, um, the space is afforded about eighty-five square feet. They're proposing sixty-two, so from an area limitation, it's, it's acceptable. Um, but the color is an issue. Uh, the purple color, um, is a, definitely a large deviation from the majority of the signs in the Commons. Um, this is the former, this is an outlot. It was the, originally the Blockbuster Video Outlot, and that's taken us back a few days. And, um, and so, uh, the signage in there, it was determined that blue is okay. Um, red and blue, America's Best has the blue, um, but purple again is a pretty big deviation. If, um, if Massage Envy would, uh, be amenable to going to blue, I think that's, um, reasonable. It would more closely match the neighboring America's Best. And, uh, just for what it's worth, um, I did some, a little bit of internet research, like I've done on the other ones, and, uh, in this case, there were several instances where the retailer utilized other colors, white, blue, green in their signage. So, it seems reasonable for the, uh, the applicant to, um, to do a different color, red or, or blue in this case.
All right. As you want to, and that's, no, I have numbers, we, the color, there is something, we could make a short sweep if that's a color.
Um, here's a sample of the purple, just for your eyes. Um, the other thing is, I, I know you mentioned in his notes that they need to find white, white, purple, or green. I had a conversation with Massage Envy after I received the memorandum. They are trying to get away from those colors as they're going through with purple as their corporate national color. Any of those that you see online with the white, blue, or green, they're trying to phase those out as they remodel those locations. Um, they prefer, they would love to have the purple so they could stick with their corporate color scheme. Um, you know, it's not, I, I, I don't believe it's that part of a deviation from the blue next to America's Best. I know it's not part of the Macedonia Commons. I did a Google Earth search driving down the street with Google Earth, Street View, right across the street is a Green Charter Bank sign. So, it's not that much of a deviation to go to purple from the red or the blue. It is a national standard. You're sitting, you're saying everybody has national standards. You were just talking about the hotels. Would you make holidaying go away from green and white to, or go away from green letters to red letters? And I, I just throw the question out there. Seems like your biggest concern here with most of the meetings is fighting about sign colors, what's your opinion? You could avoid a lot of these meetings if you just got anything red and white.
Not ours.
I know, it's not your, it's not your call. I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm just throwing it out.
People make this a little less purple and closer to blue? I mean, did you get a little, some kind of compromise? I mean, that, that's, that's almost blue, but not quite.
I mean, it's a, it's a dark purple. When it's lit up, it's not that bright of a.
Oh, it's this light?
It's not that bright of a purple.
This a lighted sign?
Yeah, it's a lighted sign.
Yeah.
And the monument, the monument sign face is mostly a white background and just purple letters, which matches what's opposed to America's Best.
Well, if we can give that conditional approval again, we, as long as you go blue, maybe your, your superiors might say, well, all right.
Well, most of the times the sign can turn off after night after they.
Well, I know that, but it's still purple.
It's not lit all night.
And again, you can always get a variance, I get, or try to.
Yeah, I think Charter ones are different, different class, a little less, different things. Um, we've had some deviation over here in the Commons and I know it hasn't gone over real well with, uh, illustration. And I say, I, I'm not, looking back, I'm not a real big fan of the colors, the other colors, if you allow it over there. I don't even know what was on.
Yeah, a recent example, I'm sorry, I voted for that.
Yeah. And that, that's what I'm concerned about, you know, is adding another color in.
No, one more color.
Because the more reasons, yeah, it's.
Is that a bit of the white, blue, or something like that?
Yeah.
Teal, that's why they're horrible. Well, why don't we do the conditional, uh, motion again? And if it's all right with their, you know, say this is it, then you wouldn't have to come back here, but otherwise you might have to seek a variance. Is that true, Brian? They'd have to seek a variance?
Well, I think the administrative relief is already built into the Commons plan that was amended back in like two thousand fourteen or fifteen, which gives the planning commission the authority to choose other colors.
Well, no, but if we, if we, if we choose to require blue, what is their remedy? They don't, they, they can't, just can't go along with it because it's going to be their national color is going to be purple.
Yeah, I mean, they, certainly they could, um, look at the option of a, a variance. Um, you know, as I sit here now, I, I really didn't research that issue, so I'd want to spend some time and look at it, but it's typically the administrative relief providing under the code.
Well, that's the last two, the same way, I think.
If they do go blue, do we got to come back for anything or just submit a new drawing?
No, we give you, we give you approval.
Correct.
Yeah.
I don't think they have submitted drawings, it's just been noted on this plan that it's going to be.
Well, there's variations of blue. I would think that they should submit a new drawing showing what color blue they're doing and.
Sort of a purple blue.
And, and if it's okay with the commission, that can be done administratively. That can be, yeah.
Well, I, I would, I would prefer to see that, Captain, I love it most. Rather than bringing other colors and mix over this.
Administratively, they bring it over there.
Yeah, so if we approved a blue.
Yeah.
And red, I mean, it's something, you know.
You don't want anything red.
They don't want red. They, they did say begrudgingly disappointing, meaning we do it.
It had to.
Oh, they did, well, it's there. They wanted me to fight for it.
A little bit of.
Yeah, a little bit of leeway trying to make it.
A little bit closer.
You're always on the pain, no more.
I'll make a motion that we create the signage presented as long as the common is in blue, and that can be administratively approved.
I'd second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Is it all the same?
Okay, this is signage for Parks and Recreation.
Are those changes?
No, these are just the ones that were originally submitted.
Yes, this one.
Oh, one is the.
We already have.
Oh, you have it.
We have this.
Oh, okay. This one is the one, the fries, a little bit different.
Oh, okay.
Is that?
Tails are wagging wasn't clever enough, you had to go with Parks and Recreation.
Yes.
That's kinda cute. I like tails are wagging.
What's your names?
Amy Beach. Start here, I'm Debbie.
All right, what should I, just give us an overview?
Um, we're just changing the face of the sign, exact same spot, exact same size. Just any way, but it's a lot of.
So this one?
That's the one with like on the.
Up at the doors?
Yes. And then that's the one that's based like on the garage, over the garage. So south side. That was colored. Yeah, that's just like color scheme, so those are the colors.
All right. So Rachel, over here, comments?
Sure. By the way, I really love the name of the business.
Thank you.
I can't get it out of my mind. Very catchy. From an area perspective, the signage is fine, and I sort of noted the same thing. It looked like it was same location, same size as the previous. Out of curiosity, was that a different business owner?
We just left the franchise.
Okay.
So that was it.
Yeah, and you're just basically doing the same thing, but changed the name to?
Correct, yes, because we left the franchise.
So really, the concerns about the area again is fine. There was a lack of detail about the sign materials and how it would be attached to the building, so that was a concern I noted in my report.
Yes.
And then felt that that should be provided, information should be provided over by signing plan. And then the sign is located in the town center district. Should be reviewed again for the architectural compliance with the standards. And I just noted some consideration should be given to a standalone dimensional lettering fixed to the building with the logo incorporated into the overall design of the sign, as opposed to, I'm not sure what the material is you're using, if it's just a.
It'd be metal sign.
With like grommets like riveted or something attached somehow to the building.
Yeah, just like this.
Screwed in.
Yeah, just like the old sign was, just screwed in, attached.
I mean, overall, the sign adheres to the area limitations. Just thought the commission may wanna have some conversation about the style of the sign.
Anybody else say? All right, can this? Mine doesn't sound already.
I think it's a temporary. Yeah, we had the temporary. Well, and they're just like these, so they will.
They're just gonna look just like the ones you got there, that's my point.
Yeah, we got approval for a temporary sign. Seven year? Two thousand eleven, June of two thousand eleven. They have pictures of it in.
Tails are wagging?
Mm-hmm.
It came to the commission for approval.
Yeah.
It's just like this one, right?
Exactly, yeah.
Well, if we approve the tails are wagging, it looks just like this one. Some board did. We wouldn't demand a change now, would we? Because it's a new sign.
Well, I'm kinda torn, you know, and I know Brian's comments about, you know, looking at it architecturally, I know the mayor has some concerns. He was hoping to see, you know, a typical like channel letter type sign like we see in other places.
A little fancier sign, is that what you, I don't know what that means.
Although I know, not only the, yeah, the town's business.
Eight.
So it's not, it's a, something that needs a lighted sign necessarily. I can see the mayor's probably wanting to have something like that. Just had here, it's a curb sign, it's raised, it's channel letters, on a raceway. I feel like it's necessary.
I guess I don't know what channel letters are. I mean, these letters like these?
No, like.
Stuck out of the?
Little box, stick out letters. Yeah, like the giant dimension.
Oh, yeah. But then you can make the dog the same way, sticking him out.
Three classes. I just, I don't know.
Yeah, it's very obvious, the surrounding signage around there, but neither does the building itself. Do you have the whole building now, or is it?
There's the license. Yeah.
Is someone else?
There's no one. No, there's. And it's Chinese now, you know, American. Yeah.
Kuchar?
Well, my argument is, I guess nothing, it's a food sign, but not necessarily the school. Hey, oh, the wagon, it's the same sign, but a different name. I don't pay for that.
It's a business.
I love that.
What if, I just thought, rather than going to roll around a channel letters in the whole thing, what if you did some kind of order, decoration, something that would give some depth thing?
Yeah.
Something like that, would that be a compromise that might be?
That might be.
Dress it up a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I go with that.
You know, because actually the front of the building itself has a fairly nice brick stone entrance space or something like that. Jabs that up, kind of, on it, in both signs.
Would you want us to do that on the one that is facing the south side as well, as on that garage type?
It works nice to do maybe not as elaborate, because that would still have.
That was very hard to, because we have to rent somebody to come out and go up there, a boom, to get up there and get that one. It's a lot more difficult to do the one.
Well, you have to get that to the sign up there.
I know, but then now you're going to.
Just do construction.
Do construction.
A little frame, a little frame, if you wouldn't mind.
That's a simple three inch border, four inch border, up to giving what you want on the sign, whether something should just stuck on the border and do a little bit more, give a little more about it up the mark, just the base of the room.
Check.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Why don't you make that, why don't you make that motion? Prove the sign.
Go for it. I'll make a motion that we approve the signs as presented with the caveat that they have to put in order along both signs, with the sign that the manager is facing this great, more, more architecturally designed, and that could be approved administratively.
Okay, so just bring in pictures of that.
To the building. I'd second that motion.
Any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Thank you.
That's a good comment.
All right, next.
Saint Georgios, twelve fifty-two store.
Same mistake I made three years. It's not Georgios, it's Rick Orios. Like Orios, I even met with a church and sat in front of them all and said, that's really wrong. Saint Georgios. No, okay. I planted our. Okay, can't read, didn't read. Sorry, didn't mean to start us off. It's okay.
We've been on a roll tonight.
That's a good way to start. George Lingle.
Okay. Why don't you give us an overview of what's.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry. I've known these people at the church for, I don't know, probably ten, twelve years, and worked with them to find a site. They were a home church. The people are scattered all over, or there's people that drive fifty, sixty miles on Sunday to the church. And they, they were a home church. I can't even remember the community name or. And then they found another home that was bigger, and they couldn't make that work. And then they found a building that they couldn't make work because it was a too narrow site. They couldn't get zoning work, get parking. This is all over the period of four or five years. And then they found this building several years ago that they were going to acquire. And I guess it was already a church before they bought it. And then they moved in there, and I went up, I think it's been two years now, they redid their altar-like area because their form of worship service is different. And they've been growing. This is great, they're really exciting. Their outreach is great, they've been growing, and they wanted to make the front of their building look more like the name of their, you know, being their Indian Orthodox. So they approached me, and I said, what do you wanna do? They said, well, we don't really know. Then I didn't hear from them for six months. Then we had a meeting, and their pastor, who pastors at two different churches, had this sketch. And he said, this is what we'd like to do. And this is sort of, this is that sketch, but put together in a form that seemed to make sense on the front of that building. Trying to get them everything they wanted to get without being overpowering. You can see in the drawing, there's that line, that pitch line, that represents the roof that's there. So we're just a little bit above it and then up a little bit more to make these, you know, make those shapes.
You're gonna build that right on the front of those, these different buildings here?
Yeah, it's a, it's a framed building with some block, like, it's lickety-stick, stone, you know, accents on the corners, it has vinyl siding on it. And our, our plan initially was to stand actually in front, and just kind of tie on to the overhang. And the more I thought about it, and the more I investigated it from a structural standpoint, we're cutting off the overhang, because it's, I think the overhang is probably two feet wide, that sticks out in the front here. But we're cutting that off so we can actually attach right to the structure of the, of the building. Makes it much, you know, makes it much more stable, there's not that blind space, you know, behind it. So it seems to make a whole lot, make a whole lot more sense.
Okay. France, just move it over.
And one thing, if I could, I'm sorry, I'm talking too much, but I noticed in the report that we got from Mr. France, I don't know where it was. Anyway, it mentions that, oh, there, in the first paragraph, in second sentence, it says, additionally, the proposal includes construction of a new, oh, that's not it. So it's the first line, the applicants are going to reface the existing ground sign, and they're not, this is, they have a sign that's out sort of by the street. When you come down the street, turn in the driveway, there's a little freestanding sign, and it does allude with it, it's carved, I think it is, there's a wood thing with an arch top on it that has their name. This does not involve that at all, that, that sign, there you go. They're not doing anything with that sign. I just included that as a picture of what's already there, and that's where they got an idea for the, you know, the cross, but they're not doing anything with that sign. Unless you want them to, but their thing at this point is. Yeah, they need to bring signs, even if it's just that sign. And I, and I am not an electronic guy, you can tell by looking at my drawing, those are hand drawn. But I'm teaching myself how to use SketchUp, and I was able to make these, make these two, well, I could get a hundred of them, you know, but these are some perspectives of kind of what I think. This is, this looks a little bit more like at eye level, or maybe a little bit above eye level. And then this is one that's a little bit more of an area, so you can see part of the building behind it. But just to give you an idea of what it really looked like. And I can leave those here with you if you want, if you want.
So the, there's a couple, couple things at play. The signage, eleven seventy-nine oh three F one permits twenty square feet of identification signage for an institutional use. I did my best to calculate out the square footage being proposed, and it looks like it's about forty-six roughly square feet. It'd be good if the applicant can provide that measurement or those details for us in the future. But it's certainly too large that they would, they'd either need to reduce it in area or seek a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals. If you go the Board of Zoning Appeals route, you'll need to have those measurements provided.
Well, we can do that, absolutely.
And then, yeah, there was no data regarding the ground sign, so I thought it was part of the application. It definitely needs to be a part of the application, because I don't think they have a permit for that.
I just didn't wanna confuse, I don't disagree, I think they need to.
Yeah. Yeah, it looks like, what was there before was, it looked like a nice sort of carved sign, maybe wood carved or.
Well, I think it was, but I'm not really sure, I didn't have anything to do with it.
Yeah, it looks like they just, I thought they were proposing to slap that over the face of it.
Oh, okay.
So I don't, I don't think that's really.
So we should do, I should encourage them to?
Do something with that sign.
On that sign, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, so that, that doesn't need to be addressed. And then, just in general, the utilization of the EFS system as a sole material for facade renovation, won't be acceptable. It could be used as an accent material. If you look in the code under eleven seventy-two oh two A, ten, D, it's actually discouraged in the architectural requirements. So that, you know, that's gonna be definitely a discussion point. I think that I'd encourage you to meet with the mayor and his staff administratively to talk about some other options to the facade treatment. Because as it currently stands, I don't think that that's permissible under the code.
Just out of curiosity, what would happen if it was actual stuck-up cement?
it was actual stucco, cement stucco?
I'll have to see what the code says. Yeah, I think if stucco is specifically called out, it's unacceptable.
So it's the appearance, not the material?
Well, it's, it talks about stucco and drive-it or EFIS.
Okay. Well, but they both, I mean, the whole idea, I may be wrong here, but I think the whole idea of the drive-it system, the EFIS system, drive-it's a brand, it's like Kleenex now.
Sure.
Yeah, but the EFIS system was to come up with a more economical way to create the look of stucco that would be more enduring and have a higher art value.
Yeah, and that's specifically defined as inappropriate
So they don't like the appearance, they don't like the appearance of stucco.
Yeah, and it, yeah, it's specifically defined as inappropriate in, in
And you know if that's just because they don't like the appearance or they don't like the durability or
I think that there's a general, it's not an architecturally acceptable material. I, I've been working with the city now for, I don't know, a few years and I've never seen that much ever approved. It's always been like a little bit as part of an accent material, but never a wholesale facade treatment.
Okay.
Again, I would encourage you to come in and meet with the mayor and talk about it.
Right, do that. Okay. Okay.
So I, in general, I recommended that it be tabled, some more details provided, more details to understand the elevation better and, again, work on how it relates to the existing roofline. And then the material type obviously needs to be discussed with the administration.
Yeah, I guess I would even have concerns about the design itself. In Ohio, when you're having that much freestanding board all year long, there are snow ice that's been filled up behind them. There's not, I don't see anything that can stop that from happening.
Well, you'd be drifting, basically, right? No, there wouldn't be, but that's the reason we made it out of six-inch steel studs, didn't extend it any further. We ran, I mean, we looked at it from a structural standpoint and it's okay, but I understand what you're saying. Since it's not just the board, it's six-inch steel studs with sheeting on both sides and then the EFIS system on the front and vinyl siding that replicates what's on the building on the back, you know, so that it can support the weight. But I still, I understand what you're suggesting.
Brian, I don't, you may not have the answer right offhand and I would understand if you didn't, but the three crosses are going to be lighted across, is that?
No, only one.
Only one?
Only the top one.
Okay. I couldn't tell by the drawing here.
Just the top one, the other two are not, okay. And they're not talking about a, yeah, I was gonna say some bright, you know, airport like that you're talking about or something so you can see it at night.
Information that we needed out.
Yeah, yeah, I can get all that, yes.
I'm a little concerned, just a few, and now that I see, I mean, the roofline, I didn't pick up on that, that this is the other, the original roofline or building outline. I drove by it last night just to try to, I'm trying to picture, you know, it sits, it sits a little bit crooked on the, on the side.
Yeah, it isn't, right, it isn't parallel to the street, right?
I'm just trying to picture what does it look like with this, things on the front, like, like, you got, you got this thing, that's exactly the thing I brought up.
Like, I'm sorry.
Like a Hollywood, they go
Like the films in the old west, you know, it's got this front with windows that, you know, it looks like, I just, yeah, it does look like there's not as much sticking out around it as I thought there was, you know, without seeing that roofline like that.
I'm sorry, see, there isn't
There's as much, you know, there's not as much height difference as I thought there was going to be when I wasn't picking it up as a building, but I mean, I'm trying to think, there's Burlington over on eighty-two and Eighth that, you know, has this, if you look at it straight from the front, it looks like it's got this big structure on it.
Sure.
As soon as you go down the road, you see it's just this, there's sticks up at the front like twenty feet.
Yeah, just about every one of the big blocks has those things there, storefronts.
So I think we can fix that a little bit with the Best Buy, they can put some depth to the, to the structures that they put on it.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's why we did this, that's why we did the big blocks on the corners, but we could do that on that.
I'm just wondering, I'm just trying to picture what it would look like. So I was just thinking, I'm not sure.
Could it be condensed more so that the top of this would
Closer to that?
Yeah. I don't see why it couldn't.
Well, possibly, I mean, possibly, we're trying, we were looking at the curves and that's kind of the way it came out, not looking goofy because it looked like we were squashing it, you know, but I understand what you're saying.
And we were going to ruin the look of the thing. Just, yeah, I'm just trying to picture what it would look like, you know, and being that it's not square in the room, even though it is set back and it's wooden, the fact that it's crooked, I mean, you're, especially if you come from west, east to west, you're really going to see
Right.
The slenderness of the front. Is that a big deal? I don't know. It's not, it's not as tall as I thought it was.
Drawing, maybe, learning how to do that, is that the scale?
Oh, yes, the relationship, yes, the relationship is the scale, yeah, which you'd never see this unless you're in the hell after, this is the way you would
Right. Actually, that's, when I look at that, it's the one that struck me as like a Hollywood setting.
Right, so, so this is, this feels too narrow.
Right.
Right?
And the backside of that is going to be what?
We're just gonna, well, it's, the structure is steel studs, so the backside of it would be, have a sheeting on it and then be covered with the same vinyl siding that is on the rest of the building.
I'm concerned too, this is a residential area, living beside it.
That's the
They have to go to the backside of it.
Well, that's the, right, that's the, that's the amount that sticks up. This, there's the roofline, just looking at it from the backside, so that's what's exposed.
I know, but yours would be the same thing.
That would have been the same stucco that's on the front, yeah.
I guess that's not as much as I was picturing. Especially last time I had
Look at the front of the drive-in. And you look at the drawing, it's
I think it's sticky up, about five feet, maybe five feet, four, you know, feet, something like that.
I think fortunately you're not in any town center district, which, you know, that means it's twice as bad.
It's good.
It's good.
That's what I meant, if I was, it would be worse, right?
That's definitely not, yeah, the western version.
Oh, well, no. Wow. Yeah, it would be hard to get an orthodox look and be western. That would be tough, yeah.
I think you have a lot of items to
Sure, got some things to address.
Do and bring back and
Yep. Well, that's why we wanted to kind of get together and get some response. No major problems except change the height and change the material.
Sign hang on. Don't forget the floor of the sign.
No, no, we're just kidding.
Out of curiosity, when, I'm guessing maybe nobody comes before you with a stucco look that you have to turn down? Because I wondered what you, what you think about, when you turn down stucco, what do you think about?
Specifically
Don't know, right. And something's just, I'll talk to the mayor.
Our architectural person. Several businesses that have had more than most successful.
Right.
That's just, you, doesn't accent, not as any of your
Right. Okay.
Interesting. Okay. So, move the table?
Move table?
Yeah.
Let's put a, like Brian is suggesting, let's be so specific, I think, we have to, we have to provide some of the questions.
We'll let you do that, you can
Do we make that two separate motions, one for signage, one for the building itself?
I just tabled the whole thing until more details come in.
Period, not be specific on the details.
But should we, should we address that freestanding sign separately from this or include it in this?
I'd just point out to your, to your client that the commission discussed it, it was brought up, it's an enforcement issue right now.
Okay.
Rather than making it an enforcement issue, add it as part of your application.
So, so we'll include it with this when we come back?
Be the easier and friendlier way to do it.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, okay. All right. Okay, thanks. And if I understand the schedule correctly, then we have to get back in, where did I see it? Pretty quick. Yeah, we have to get back in pretty quick to make April twenty something, right? Is that right?
Yeah.
When would it, when would it have to be back in?
I don't know. I think, yeah, I want to say until Friday, but we aren't
Oh, there it is, right there. The next meeting, December sixteenth, it has to be back in by March twenty-sixth.
Motion is dead, we'll send it to the person who has the details. Is there a second?
One second.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mark, thank you, Dick. So you guys are culvers?
Culvers.
Wait us.
I don't have the grill in the car.
I brought some a lot of stuff here, so if there's a line, I'll stand, I could think better.
However, you'd like to do it.
Can I get you guys' names?
I'm Dara Sesi.
Please tell me your last name.
S E S I.
Frank C A S T R O V I L L A R I. It's midnight now. I have to apologize, I thought the site plan had dimensions on it, so I brought another one for you in case you needed, needed that. So we're here looking for site approval and elevation and sign language approval, so this way we can continue doing engineering drawing and getting you guys, your engineering department, a full set of documents to move forward. This was a lot of challenge to this piece of property. You know, this road hasn't even gone in yet and that caused a whole bunch of ripple effect, how much we can do and what we can't do. But, I mean, that's why we're here, I brought samples of colors. And if you guys don't like these colors, I have backup colors. So we tried to bring everything we could tonight to address everything so we could really move forward, so. If you have questions, obviously, I know that Brian sent a nice letter out. I think we can nail most of those tonight and hopefully we'll get approval to some that we don't have information that we can supplement later on with, so. I'll go with you guys, so.
All right, so this road, is it supposed to go this year, twenty eighteen, does anybody know? We don't know.
Yeah, I guess I'll certainly tell everyone as much as I know. As you know, the city has been pursuing the construction of this access drive for a while now and as Mr. Cutlik is aware, the city in writing approached all of the property owners in the JED regarding an assessment to pay for this access drive. There's twelve properties in the JED. Nine of the twelve properties responded with a yes, that they were in favor of the access drive and the assessment. Unfortunately, that's not unanimous. There are three properties who, well, they never said no, but they did not say yes in writing. So the mayor has instructed the law director to move forward with the assessment process. So unfortunately, we did not get one hundred percent of the properties to agree, so we do have to go through the legal assessment process and, yeah, I'm not sure, I want to speak to the details of that, I would let the law department speak to those details.
On ours, on our end, if the road doesn't go in, we can't move forward. Not that that matters to anybody.
Well, no, and it does, and that's the whole
But the road is like a big settlement.
Yeah, there's no question about it and that's why the city wants to install the road is to develop these properties and, and to enhance all of the properties in the JED and, most notably, these two vacant lots, so.
Can I ask, in your opinion, is this going to be more of a timing issue or a yes or no issue? You would move forward with private council with this?
Yeah.
Is it going to be that we're going to pull force or
Yeah, I hear, I hear your question.
I'd like some comfort knowing that this will eventually come, because it's
Sure.
It'll take a lot of
Yeah, I think that the answer to your question is it's a timing issue, more of a yes or a no. You know, these guys know the mayor, the mayor is not going to drop the project just because one or two people didn't agree upfront, so, I mean, you could take that for what it's worth, I can't carve it in stone for you, but that's certainly my opinion, yes.
I spoke to him.
Oh, good.
He thinks it's pretty good.
Yeah. I'm, yeah, I'm confident also that the road will happen.
They've got to get an approval from ODOT. That's, that's what's holding up for twenty some years.
I know, why is it approved?
It is.
Yeah, no, we, yeah, we, yeah, city currently holds an approval from ODOT as we speak.
I'm sorry, we moved to a different direction.
That's okay.
It's going to go right there.
So they're going to be between the driveway and the
Yes, it'll be right, left turn only.
This is the new
And just back, this is actually
This is that culvert. This is that culvert. So this is the side of the building, the new building.
It's a way back there. So, I mean, it hasn't
It's a
It's a
It's not long only
It's a
It's a
It will be the last. Our, we're trying this, we want to move forward and we do
And
We also know that it could be tough for a little bit till this time, that comes in because you're going to drive through
It was an initial plan.
So that's
The road will be incoming this way, going south.
At this point
Yeah.
As long as the timing issue, we have to feel comfortable. If it's more of a timing issue, ten dollars, but if we have any indication that this is done, it's not going to happen yet, that could affect this.
When I talked to court, they said if it's within a year or two, they don't care, but if it's more than two years at that corporate level, because they override everybody, if it's going to be more than two years, if they would possibly say either wait or no go, right? So that's beyond our control as well.
And we all, I'm going to be invested.
In fact, we have a proposal to do more with this end of the lot, put more urgency on the approval process for the road.
That's what we
Well, it's, the approval of that has been gained, now it's just how's it getting paid for?
Right.
And nine of, or whatever, of the, of the businesses back there have, are willing to pony up.
Give the addresses outside.
A few others.
We'd love all the help we can get.
Yeah, I guess we'll get back to the
Yes, yeah, so that is what it is, we'll have to see what happens with it, but I think I got the, any more feeling on it, probably talk to the mayor, see how he sees it. Brian, would you go over your comments?
Sure.
I know you guys have seen me, but just
Can I just make a request? Can we separate, because there's, there's two people here, like, he'll take care of the signage issues and I'll take care of the rest of it, so can we just separate them like that, if that's okay, or?
Yeah, I mean, they're separated that way on my floor.
Okay, beautiful, thank you.
So I was just going to go one, two, three, down the line. So, the, we know it's in the crossings, it's sort of a little over a thirty-eight-hundred square foot restaurant and the crossings have, they have their own criteria and then we have sort of these general site planning requirements and then we have the signage issue, so I was going to go through crossings first. It does require, the crossings requires cross-access between the subject parcel and the existing grade escape, but given this discussion about the planned right, right turn access out the state Route Eight, I really don't think it's necessary or even pertinent to do that, to have the cross-access between the parcels. So I think that, but that would be something that, you know, you'd need to get an approval from the JED board to do it without cross-access. I wouldn't think that would be an issue, being if the planning commission supported that. Then these other things are just sort of general requirements. They're just sort of performance standards as it relates to landscaping. I'm sure you looked at all this in the crossings criteria.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we indicated where landscaping was gonna go, but we didn't go as far as picking out trees, because we didn't know if we're gonna move on to the other.
Yeah, I mean, the plan is, it's, so I would call the plan very conceptual in nature. You know, there's conceptual in nature, then there's a preliminary site plan, there's a final site plan. Preliminary, you give us more details, final, it's everything, and you're going to construction drawings. So with that said, I would, I titled it as a conceptual site plan, because it's, it's very, it's just that, it's a 50,000-foot level plan. It says, here's generally how we wanna lay out the site, the use, and I think the use is fine. I do have some concerns about the site layout that I wanna get into. The landscaping stuff's important, but very easily cured, if you provide a landscape plan at a later date, you can, you can meet these requirements. The one thing on the landscaping issue, though, that I was concerned about is the five-foot wide planning area along the building's prime facade, the west building elevation. Half of that is landscaped, and the other half is something, I think potentially, maybe that's your garbage dumpster. I'm not sure what that area is.
I'm sorry, you're talking about right, right here?
Yeah, right adjacent to the landscape area, area in front of the.
Yeah, we have a, a concrete walk in front of it with a ramp, so that the employees can come out and dump everything in here. And there will be, I think it's around three foot, three inches, three foot of grass area to the, what is that, the south, to the south of that.
So that is the garbage dumpster in front of the building?
Yes, yes.
So your garbage access for your truck would come into that area?
Right, exactly. Drive in straight this way, and then obviously go back out again.
So I, I mean, I understand it's a limited site, but that is, you know, that's definitely a concern I have, is that dumpster area and how it's designed, how it's in front of the building, how you have to drive through the parking spaces to get to it. That's a concern I have. And that, again, that was driven by the, the landscape comment, but it's really picked up on, on the second page, under the general comments.
Well, due, due to the fact that most of our traffic will probably come from here, we consider this as being the front. I mean, really, we have four fronts to this, this property.
Sure, it's a highly visible area. For the purposes of the city, your front's facing the road.
Right.
Your functional front of how you're bringing customers in is very different than our visibility front.
Because of the, the site was so tight, functionally, this is probably the easiest way to get onto the property, get the service done, and have a leave, without disturbing the rest of the site.
Had you considered any other form for the building on the site?
This is their prototype.
It's a corporate prototype, right?
It's a corporate prototype, and to be honest with you, this is gonna be their, their black sheep. There's no other culvers like this one. This is the western reserve, but it was requested, don't touch the footprint. So that's something that I had to design around. So the footprint is extremely important, that corporate, at the corporate level, told me not to change it, period. They dictated, matter of fact, corporate did the site plan. So this is based off of their standards, what they want, how they want it to function and operate. And I just took it in and fit it into the actual site. So a lot of it was dictated.
Had they seen an aerial of the site?
Yes, they have. They've seen aerial. I believe one guy came up.
They did, and if I could just say a couple things. One is, this wasn't the first one we submitted, so we met with the mayor, and this was the one we met with them, with three or four?
Well, there's been eight renditions, and I think the, the city is, the mayor has seen two or three.
And this is the one that he, so the last, this is the one that he referred. So we, we originally sent it, he had some comments, I think it was about frontage parking, or some of the part. So we had to do some configuration, change a thing around, and then there was another issue, then we changed again, and then this was the one that he, you know, this is what he did refer. So this, this is, this was our, like, as much compromise as we possibly do. And if I was to make account about the garbage route, as far as it's, you know, it is concealed, so as far as the look of it, I know because you were bringing it up the landscape issue, it is gonna be basically part of the building. So all the unique sides is gonna be the road, that's right, as the front, that you'll see. So if, if there's a cosmetic issue, there shouldn't be, because it, it's basically, it's gonna look like part of the building, except for the access, where they would actually get the dumpsters out. And the functionality of it, like I said, to be completely honest, there is no other place to put it, where we're pretty tight on spaces, it is, very tight on spaces.
Had you considered one-way traffic?
That's something corporate said absolutely not.
So they'd said, we can't mess with the form, we can't mess with the layout, take what we get, basically.
No.
Because it, I mean, it's not, the, the site. I'm a big one on designing to the site, and I'm not feeling like we're designing to the site.
Well, I mean, they, they felt that this right here being two-way is fine, this is where most of their customers come. This, in a sense, is all one-way, from, from this back. But they would like to have the two-way in this, in this area, where the public is mostly gonna park. I mean, there is a little bit of leeway with this front, and I know that you've had some comments about the, the entrances, and I think we can work through that tonight.
Okay.
To be honest with you, but this right here is something that they are really stressing that that's what they want.
So, yeah.
But your, your discernment is over here, correct?
Both, both.
So I, I have, just going through my comments, the landscaping, again, is easy, but I have concern about the two-way ingress and egress on the north side. It functionally, I, I think it's, that's gonna be that, in concert with the close proximity to the southern ingress and egress, then the very close proximity to the great escape. That's gonna be a, a traffic mess in that location, in my opinion. So I, I wondered about, you know, could you take it, make it a one-way ingress and egress, a right-out, basically only, on the north side?
We're, we're not opposed to doing that on the north side. I think corporate won't like it, but I think they'll be fine with it, if it moves the project along.
What about the idea of just one single accessway? Is that, has that been kicked around?
They told me no.
We could, I think we could do the north end, I think that would be fine, except for that.
Yeah, no, they were talking about combining these into one, one-way in, one-way out.
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, that would just, it'd be very hard, because this is a drive-through, and then this is where they went crazy. Is that what you're saying, they were, that you would leave us with, and then over here, in and out, and especially, this is our, our way to get in?
Again, I think corporate would be okay with the north end being one-way, and, but they really want the two cuts to come in.
Yeah, I, I just.
Yeah, did they give a reason for needing the two-way traffic and needing to?
Over the, the course of 600 stores, this is what works best for, for their, their brand, their situation.
I just think the flow, you know, the goal is.
It makes it much worse.
You're saying, I think you're, I get out of here.
You go, driveway, driveway.
We're talking about, yes, have one driveway.
Yeah. I had a bare minimum that has to be.
You're very, very close to this access point.
Right.
You know, so you're making right side of your, cars coming out, and you're making left. It's, it's, it's almost too crowded.
I just, I personally feel like. So if you take, if you were leaving out here, it'd just be easy to leave out here, but if you just kept this one, or I don't know if you're saying, come in the middle, you would have to come up here. I think that could cause some issues, especially with people coming in this way, you got these people going out. It'd be, for them, they could just right out, and be gone. And I just, and, you know, from a business standpoint, multiple access is a good thing, right? We know more entrances.
From a flow of traffic safety, less, less access is the way you want it.
What would be the alternative?
It's, it's awful close to this, it's an awful lot of movements allowed to be happening here, and here, and here, and here.
Well, we would remove this by making this one-way only.
Okay.
Okay? So that would, you know, I mean, obviously, this has to be, you know, two-way, you know, so someone can come in.
Obviously, I think you just have counterclockwise flow, and everything works well.
Can we compromise in keeping this, and just make this one-way? Because we were able to, like I said, we changed this plan a lot of times, and this was the last one that we thought would be okay. Culvers is already kind of that, man, so. If I had to go back to them, I'd do it, and I, I'm sure they would compromise on this, but I guess the.
I mean, I can't, I can't, I guess, answer that, and I can't, I can't address that to that extent.
I mean, if somebody's coming in the, the north end, the only place they can park is those three or four spots in the front, because they won't be able to make a left-hand turn to park on that diagonal park.
And that's why I think that, I think we would be fine with this being one-way exit only. I don't think that's a huge killing issue, but I, I do believe that the two drives would be.
What if the southernly drive was entrance only?
You want this entrance only, and this exit only?
Well, it makes it, this makes this all one-way, which, again, I was told that they would, they really want this portion to be two-way. So I, I don't know. I, I, the only thing I can say is I can ask them, I just don't know how they would react.
What about the, the notion of reducing it down to 12 to 14 feet?
For the north?
The one-way out, yeah.
But the one on the north, again, if we make it one-way, I don't think it's an issue narrowing that down, and we can make this, like, more away from each other.
Well, I'm thinking if you did that, you could shift your landscape island and shift your drive, your southern driveway as well.
A little bit north?
Yeah, a little bit north.
Back to work.
Again, I'm just throwing it out, Mr. Chairman, I mean, trying to work with the site. I mean, we have, we have limitations from corporate, but we also wanna make sure our job is to, you know, plan appropriately.
I, I mean, again, I think if we're shifting things over a few feet here and there, I think the concept would be still the same. We have two ways, or two cuts. If we make one, one-way, I, I think I can sell that to them. I'm not sure if I can sell one.
And I just wanted to make sure I can capitalize. That would be moving this a little bit farther here, narrowing this down.
And making it one-way.
Yeah, I think.
I agree.
I think somebody would get taken there.
Yeah.
What's, do you know what the width of this?
I, I believe it's, it's either 22 or 24. I bet, I'm not 100% sure.
The driver.
Between, yeah, the drive between.
The two-way.
It's either 22 or 24.
It can, I think it can only be 22. I think that's the maximum, maybe, I'd have to look into code. That, that was a difficulty in reviewing the plan. It's a, you know, an architect, yeah, an architect's scale, an eighth of an inch equals 55 feet or something, it's difficult.
I, I hope we were tight this, coming this way, so if it's, if it's 22 feet, then I, I can almost guarantee this to be 22 feet. Because we had to actually, you know what, I think you're right, because we actually had to make these, originally, those were 18, and the mayor asked us to make them 20. So we had to take it out somewhere, thought we had 24, and then we made it to 22 to incorporate an extra foot in each row.
Yeah, 22 is the maximum, and then on the, the north side, it'd be 19 feet is the maximum. If I can, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Just, we're, and that's fine, we've jumped around a little bit. There's a bunch of general comments, I think you're aware of, photometrics plan.
Yeah, that's all, we'll.
Stormwater, landscaping.
Yep.
You will need a variance for your parking.
Yes.
You have too few, which understandably, you have a fairly large building on a fairly small site with a whole lot of access around it.
Yes.
So you're gonna have parking issues.
And we were told that you guys might be able to approve that tonight by the mayor. I don't know if that's true or not.
That's what he told us.
To prove.
The lack of parking is a shared space. Yeah, because the mayor mentioned something about, you know, we can, there's parking across the street, which is here, which I kinda indicated, and there's great escape parking that we can use as overflow.
Plenty of parking.
And we change it from 20 to 18. Right.
Well, can we approve it? I didn't think we could.
I had a question that you brought that up.
Sure.
When I went and looked, I went over the, with today. It looks like they have those fences, right, where you're proposing.
Yeah, they would have to walk, they would have to walk.
Get some of that property there, it looked like this one.
No, we wouldn't get it, it would just be an easement, you know, a, a parking easement. So their employees would probably park there. So this would be strictly, you know, customers only, and your employees would have to take a hike.
And walk. Do you feel comfortable that this north parking would serve your customers?
We do. 45 is the absolute fair minimum that called the corporate level.
We would, we would prefer.
52? Yeah. 50, 52 is their.
But 45 is, is reasonable. What, 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 you know what, it'd be a good problem to start.
That, that section, that section of code, I think the mayor might be referring to is 117111. D1, it talks about separate or combined use of facilities. And we've never used that before at the planning commission level for shared parking, but I suppose by a quick read, maybe you, you could. If the applicant's stating that's, that that's their bare minimum they can get away with, you know, you might be able to employ that section.
Good, we'd appreciate it. That's what we get. We get that, we get this part done.
Which one is that, Brian?
117111. D1.
Oh, D1, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
But, I, I mean, do you have permission from Great Escape to use their parking?
I'll get away, we'll get a variance, we should.
Well, that's a, that's a, that's a permission. Yes, you can use it, and you have to maintain it, or you don't maintain it, because this commission's gonna wanna know if they grant a shared parking, you have permission to use someone else's parking.
Yeah, I don't believe it's been 100% worked out.
My, my agent was in the, in the middle of approaching them, and we were just gonna ask if we could use it, and that it would be okay if we were allowed to park. That part of the parking, I do believe they don't use it, it's not like, it's not, they don't actually use it. We don't see it being an issue, but obviously, we could get something to you.
Yeah, and I'd say that, you know, for the commission sake, if you're comfortable with that, you know, contingent upon them securing it, I, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
I mean, worst case, is you don't give them permission.
Right, well, you still need to get preliminary plan approval. I mean, I, I'm recommending a conceptual plan approval, basically saying to you, from a 50,000-foot level, use, and generally, some of these things we talked about are acceptable, but you need to provide a preliminary plan.
Well, what we would do is, if everything gets approved tonight, we're gonna give finals. We haven't time to do.
We don't think we can give you a preliminary approval, I think there's too much risk.
What do we, what do we miss that gets it?
A lot of things that Mr. Francis has gone through, and his comments, and the access is not, you know, resolved.
Can't we, can't we just do a contingent on that?
It's not a lot of contingents.
But I just can't be completely, I've just been.
I mean, I, I can send it to you guys, and you guys can look at it ahead of time, but for us to come back a whole month from now, we have a serious time limit.
And that makes.
I understand, this is your, you know, this is a pretty major development. You're packing a lot of stuff onto a small site, and you're expecting to get approval in one day. That's, 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 yeah, you are, that's what you're asking for. It's for preliminary approval in one day, with a major segment of issues. That's pretty tough for us to.
And I understand, I understand his position, but it does touch on that. We met with the mayor a couple times, we met with him once, we, we met some both, and we had to change a whole elevation to this building, we changed everything with it. We would have had this to you much earlier, but now I'm at the very tail end of my purchase agreement, and I'm gonna have basically no choice, and I have to make a decision whether I purchase this land and sit on it, or I might be able to develop that. And I don't, we were at the point where, I don't know if I have enough time to wait for another month to get it. I'd be open, I know we have a lot more to touch on, and I'm all, we gotta, we'll go through every single comment. But like this, this, for example, if this is the issue, I would love if you guys say, okay, approval, contingent on you guys making those changes. And then we can make those changes, I could get them to you with some projects, and we're almost done with the final.
And I'm sure, I'm sure, you know, changing the architecture, everything, that did kill some time.
A long time.
But it's published what are their architectural standards for this area. You look at every building in there, you should not even come to the mayor with a building that didn't look like this. You could have saved yourself two months by just taking a look out there, what's out there, and reading the, you know, the guidelines for the district.
That was, that was part of it. The other part was getting us, convince culvers to change our whole building. This is literally gonna be a one-of-a-kind building. They've never had this building, so we, it wasn't just changing it, it was changing, showing them, change it, showing the mayor, change it, so it's kind of the same process we're doing with you, with the mayor and culvers. So, and like I said, we have already, we changed the site plan nearly four times. And we're just at a point where he's already almost done with architectural lines. I mean, we're pretty close to giving you a final plan.
I mean, I don't know what you guys think about the architecture and grants are, but I mean, as soon as I opened it, I said, wow. They're coming in, you know, I didn't know that there's been two months beating up this and that, you know, they're doing it right.
Okay.
We got some other plans that we're supposed to be looking at today that didn't get the picture. And thankfully, they pulled themselves off the agenda. But to me, this looks good. I don't see any problem with this. I was, I was like, wow, they came in for the first time with it not knowing. I don't know if you guys have any thoughts on the architecture of the building? Yeah, I think it'll fit in real well with the rest of the structure.
Thank you. I mean, are the site issues enough that if you and I work together and you're happy with it, that it would be?
Yeah, I mean, I'm a small piece of the pie. I mean, the engineer has, I'm sure, issues as well that need to be worked out relative to, so, you know, the, the commission possibly could give you a, again, a conceptual approval contingent on a number of issues, but they're not, I don't think they're going to call it a preliminary plan approval. If you need that for the purpose of a contract execution, my gut feeling is you're not going to get that tonight. That's my gut feeling. I could be wrong. I don't speak on behalf of the commission, but I think what they probably would be willing to do for you is a conceptual approval that says you have a lot of site issues that need to be worked out and you need to work them out and come back. If you want to come back with a final plan approval, we've had that happen before. That means cross every T and dot every I and come here with everything done, but it's got to be based on a discussion at this level with, again, these concepts that need to be worked out. The drive aisles and some of these bigger issues. Then again, I can't speak on their behalf, I'm just trying to give some guidance as their planner. Some of the other things, if I can just, since we, and I hate to say this, but I was on a 7:15 deadline to leave this evening for some personal reasons, but I want to at least get this out in front of you guys so we can talk through a couple of these things. But the, that north, the door on the north building elevation that exits out to the landscaper.
Yeah, that's actually goes on concrete. It's not, it's not landscaped.
It says landscaped, so.
I'm sorry, I'm in the north side?
Yeah.
This door right here you're talking about?
Yeah, there's a ramp there in the drive-through lane.
Right.
Does that come out to like a walkway that leads to the patio?
Does that go straight to the?
Yeah, that, that just goes straight out. That, that's, that's a means of egress.
Does it go out?
Exit, or is that?
This one, this one right here is going to be what they call the runner. So, you know, if you order, you come down here and you wait and there's a runner that goes and gives your food out. Same thing with online orders in the future. The online order people will come here and this guy runs out and brings out your food. This one right here is just another, the second means of egress that we need. This is the main way, and that's why all the public, most of the public is parking is here. So, in order to get to the patio, you would come up, go to double doors on the south side and go to the patio that way. So, this right here, that concrete ramp, that's all there is. And then there's landscaping next.
That's not for customers to exit?
It's the second means of egress, yes.
Just for the building code?
Yes, right.
But it's not to walk back to the future patio area?
No, no, it would not be intended to use in that, only because there's a lot of traffic going through there, so they discourage that. They really want them to come out this way and use the patio, use that main door. That's why we gave them a bigger walkway, double doors, and we push the patio that side, so.
But everybody that parks from that side has to exit that?
No. This right here, in the future, this, this, what this would be used for is for your online order. So, you would call or call ahead or call or do it online. You come in, you park. It's kind of like what Giant Eagle is doing.
Yeah.
Right, you just heard. You come in, you park, you call, and they have a runner that comes out and delivers. Now, if you do park here, you, yes, you would use this door to get in. You wouldn't use this door. This door would be more accessible.
What's the right door?
Again, it's just a means of egress. It's just a need that.
Designated egress inside?
I'm sorry?
Is it a designated egress?
Yes.
So, it'll egress to a hard surface?
Yes, yeah, it'll have a landing and then a ramp that goes down to the drive, yes. But the landscaping is to the side of that. There is a line that's drawn there that separates the two.
This is kind of the equivalent. I mean, you guys know our McDonald's here, it's kind of, you come up the side door on the drive-through, kind of stepping right up.
Right.
You got to be careful, I guess, and you kind of hope that most people don't park over there.
You park there once and that's it.
If you guys run out of food about 500 times a day, I may hit my car, yeah. But I don't know if you're familiar with Culvers, but we actually park our cars, so that's why you see the parking stalls here, and that is going to be the main reason for that. That's where we're going to be running our food out of. So, we don't serve, we don't serve food typically at the window. We give them a number, they pull, we run out the food to them.
Because it's all, it's all cooked to order.
Where do the workers park?
On pre-made. That's why there's a longer waiting.
Yeah, that would be.
What was it?
That would be.
Well.
And I don't see that.
Yeah, Jim, my only other comments then relate to the signage, so.
Step back. Me too.
Your ground sign has a limitation of 45 square feet using regular geometric shapes.
What's your name?
My name's Matt Cobb.
Do you know if they have any ones at 230?
So, again.
I do have revised plans that were sent to me this afternoon. I apologize if they haven't been forwarded.
That's okay. So, let me, let me step back a second. So, signage at the planning commission level typically is not done during site planning. It's done as a separate package or?
We were terrified the mayor didn't include it.
We would have loved that.
Yeah. It was dictated to us to do that.
They told us to do that. I mean, I, it's not typical for me either. I thought it was bizarre, too.
Yeah, I mean, if the mayor told you to do it, that's, I mean, he's boss, but typically they look at that maybe with the final site plan submittal or as a separate submittal package. It's fine to have it tonight. I mean, for the, for the most part, you're real close on your area. You know, by my calculation, you have about 100, just under 188 square feet, and you're allowed just a little over 177 square feet of signage. So, I mean, there's little tweaks you can make to meet the sign.
Those were made, those adjustments were made.
Yeah, so that's great. And then the only, really the biggest issue is that sign on the east building elevation, the 3.42 square foot sign. You can only have one sign per building elevation. So, your east elevation is two signs? The second.
That's the sign that says, make everything go.
It's a little burger that looks all happy and.
I live with that.
Yeah, that, that, it's just not allowed, that second sign on that elevation.
It's not ideal.
And you're, by the way, you're not the first that have heard this, especially in recent, in the last couple of months, so several other fast food restaurants have attempted that as well.
As a matter of fact, we got the comments and all those changes that you're talking about, we've never even made, I don't know, take forward to you guys directly now. We changed the square footage and it's all been taken care of as of 230.
That's good. Yeah, you could take care of that. That's, that's a big checkbox.
And I'm sure somebody hasn't, you know, showed me some.
I have.
I'll be sure you won't.
And you could distribute, and I'm sure if, yeah, the basic plan is the same, we have the district, we can take off the one sign.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I do apologize, I have to step out. People will pass my drop that time, but certainly could provide the applicant with my contact info and help them through the process.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Just step back to the parking for a second. I just want to, just for your information, just from me, the board members can decide what they want to do, but on that parking issue, I don't know, there's a thing here that says, we should do that. Based on the suggestion you took, I would not be comfortable without the request for the parking not going to be.
Would we see it?
Because it's a, of there.
Right.
See, these are the, the trials, I appreciate your call.
We've got to make that decision.
That's the only one you could do.
And we've been working, it's not like we just started working on this. We've been working on this for.
Doesn't have to be a mixed use for a lot.
So, we really worked on it, so we thought that was the purpose of meeting the mayor when we did meet with him, was to kind of get some of this.
So, this code section probably wouldn't.
And the truth is, we did change it four times. So, you see, at this point, I know you're saying that, I mean, we've been working very hard.
It's a great escape for Lowe's or something.
There's a lot of variances that got dealt there.
It's a parking, it's a parking, the most part is.
Parking, parking is a big issue, and I think, you know, I think for the most part, I think we'd probably be okay with it as long as there's some assurances or somebody else's kind of, yeah, is the judge board okay with it, which I'm pretty.
We don't know much about.
Yeah, we don't know much about them, but I'm guessing with, just like with us, if you provided them with some more information, like, okay, Lowe's says it's okay, Great Escape says it's okay, they've got approval, they've got approval from them here, their letter saying we can use the parking, whatever you might have. They're probably, I should, but, but we will probably be okay with that. Nobody here's got real heartburn with using shared parking on some other place, and as long as we, we're pretty confident they can do it. That sending the employees and making those guys go on.
That's.
I think that's good. Kind of going with your assurance that 45 is, you know, I'm sure as tough as it sounds like corporate's being on you, if they're okay with the 45, you're probably, you know, good. We've seen other places that are a little under parts, not too far from here, that, that they don't have real secondary places to go.
I guess my other question is if you don't have documentation.
Sure.
I just don't want you to come back next month without documentation, because I expect people to.
Right. Same, same. You know, something. And I think, I think all the things that Brian's got to know and things that we've talked about can be accounted for and solved. I mean, I don't think, I really don't like this, but I don't think I would get, personally would vote against doing this. I really think one way around the building is much, much better. You know, up here at Chipotle, they got two-way, this part of the parking lot where everybody parks, and it's, it's a butt to back out of a parking spot. I would much rather pull them to a place that's got angle parking, knowing I've only got to look in one direction.
If we think of parking, I lose two per side, and then the corporate says, no, you can't do that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, the only route I would like to see is that, if, from, from a, from a consumer and knowing I've only got to look in one direction for somebody, I mean, it's a little bit strange to be going down here, now you just, somebody wants to get to the drive-through, now you've got to crisscross a movement.
Right.
I don't think it's great, but I don't think this is something that, you know, I'm not going to put my foot down and say, darn it, you got it.
That's more.
This, this is a little more concern of mine.
We could take care of that.
And I think, yeah, if there could be some kind of accommodation, meet halfway, I mean, ideally, I would rather see one right in the middle maybe or something like that, but I understand you want your driveway, your drive-through flow to come out. I'm concerned a little bit about the distance between just two things, just because this is probably, there's about 10 cars a day coming out of Great Escape.
Right.
There's going to be a lot.
Well, we even asked if you guys didn't build roads and you moved the road a little bit. That didn't overwhelm.
I think, however, it shows that spot that's etched in stone.
We said it, we'll move that, we'll move this a little bit, narrow this down like you said, and you want to move this a little closer to the middle, right? And that would be like your best compromise.
I don't.
Because we, I'm going to go back and make this change. So, I just want to make sure I make it and agree with it.
I don't know that I.
Can't always see everything you guys are pointing at.
I think this should move far up that way.
Oh, you don't think that?
Personally, I don't think so. I think, I don't have a, I think maybe Brian had a problem with these two being real close.
Yeah, that was part of his concern, was that those two are too close. And you do have a good point, Chairman, that the Great Escape has. There's nobody there. I'll say it.
But it could be something else come up.
That's true. It could be, yes. That's true. I guess my thought is.
Absolutely.
Right on. Of course, right on the crack. You do something like that.
A curd return.
So, that becomes a bit, a bigger landscape.
I would say that's not an issue.
This is only this way.
Right.
Okay.
I would actually propose, if you, since you said that there was an issue here, maybe you move this curve over a couple of feet.
I don't, I don't know if a couple of feet is going to make a big difference. I mean, if you could swing it all the way down here, but that's not going to work with the curve. I completely understand that.
Yeah, you get a big turning radius here, so this is likely to be okay.
Yeah, you want to, you want to be able to make that turn. I'm just, you know, this is where a significant amount of traffic is going to come out, and that's, that's my bigger concern, but I know you can't move this.
We can do that. We can, we can curve that.
I would almost rather keep this where it's at and give you more room between here and here, you know, if, if you're packed and you're backed up and for some reason, some crazy reason, you know, it's, you know, giving away free burgers one day in the lines back here, you got less chance of it.
Right.
Blocking this thing.
It was requested to make that 22 feet, so we could move this curve over two feet to.
Couple of feet, I got it.
Yeah, I understand.
If this was, if this was a fast food restaurant, if this was McDonald's here next to yours and you had a ton, there's lots of that, and you have a real problem with it, Mr. Putter. So, there could be something different, you know, someday, but hopefully it's not. Hopefully it's not. And maybe when that, you know, if that ever changes, maybe move their traffic or something.
Yeah, and even if, if traffic does increase over here for Great Escape, you know, you've got your incoming traffic is this way and it's no different than any other left-hand turn that you'd be making on a normal road, and then, let me ask you this, that this has to be right out, if you have people pull so many carts here, goes in to eat, comes back, they come out.
Right.
Do you give them the option to come out here or here, or do you make them come over Do you give them the option to come out here or here, or do you make them come over here? Because this, this could get to be, here's the solution here, I think, good. But in this zone, this is a kind of an all movements allowed area and there's not a lot of room and the throat here is real short and this throat is real short.
Here's, here's how I can answer that.
I, I fear it might become a little bit of an issue.
Here's how I can answer that. They told me this has to be two-way.
Okay, so this has to be two-way.
Yes. I could probably ask them if this is enter only, but we would like to have that twenty-four foot because, you know, we're, we also have to access, we also have to access.
You gotta get into your dumpster, your delivery.
So if we keep this at twenty-four and we keep this at, let's just say nineteen, whatever that is, and whoever comes out here is forced to go this way, I don't think that's going to be a huge.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering, exactly. I'm wondering if you, you bring everybody in here and everybody out here, I think that may help.
Right.
Your traffic.
Since you have red.
Sure.
Maybe we don't, maybe we don't do it like this, maybe we cut it this way.
Well, yeah, you would shave that off, yeah.
We would cut this a little bit to make that turn a little bit easier.
But I think we're really getting into the minutia of it here, but this is good. An issue like that, I think can be solved. And I, I know, I think taking your best effort and trying to do something, I think now you kind of know our concerns, but I think it sounds like something, I don't know if you, you know, if, it sounds like there's something that we could probably agree on there.
My thing, Kevin, is can we agree upon it, I change it tomorrow and we can make approval based on that I'll change it and knock tables the next month? It's a big deal to me. I will make that change. You have my guarantee, you will have those plans. We will call Culvers and make those plans and Frank is going to stay up all night tonight to make those changes. And it really is a very time sensitive situation where I'm down to my last thirty days to hold on this project. And I will make that change. I will do it for you.
Can you get, can you get a permission from Lowe's and, and the Great Escape to buy them more too?
No, I won't be able to get those. And, and I don't think those would be an issue, but can I be asked what, as far as that goes, if we're okay with forty-five parking spots, what, what's, what's, uh, well, what would be okay? We, we feel like we're okay with forty-five. I'll still get those, but I'm okay with forty-five spots. If you can live with having forty-five spots, we can live with that. So as far as that parking goes, I just don't, I don't see the urgency on that because it's just to be where some of my employees park.
How can you give some, some kind of, yeah.
If, if this makes you feel better, just, just to throw this out there, your code says one parking space for every fifty square feet. Half of this building is kitchen. Letway. Okay, so if you take fifty square feet, that means I need thirty employees just for the kitchen. They don't employ four, right. There's between four.
And that's the calculation that's used.
Right, no, exactly, right, exactly.
It takes into account that there's, as the building is.
No, I know we had, we, that's what variance, we have variance in house, we want to say that, like, we cut down our parking. So it's kind of like Tom, because he wanted to cut down the parking, take the parking out the front, remember we had the parking in front? We took those out when we lost, what, nine parking spots? Yeah. So it was kind of like, take the parking out, but you need the parking, you need it, you know, so I just don't know how we could have won with that. But my point is, we can live with the forty-five parking spots. We're fine with it. Culvers is fine with forty-five parking spots.
Forty-five parking spots, not including the parking by Lowe's?
Yeah, yeah, that's just these.
Forty-five.
I don't see why we lose Lowe's. Yeah, we know, that's not including Lowe's. I don't really care if we get Lowe's or not. We're fine with, corporate says they have to have forty-five or more and we have to.
Yeah, but we still have.
No, I understand. I, right, I, right, I understand.
You have the code, I shouldn't be able to say this because I hate extenuating. But I, I would, before I would approve anything, I'd almost have a special meeting.
Yeah.
Chairman, we could do that. Mr. Chairman. The mayor is apparently anxious for you to move.
There's a lot, I don't know if all those other businesses have approval, but there is a lot of overflow parking in the Lowe's parking lot, for Chick-fil-A, Chipotle, the employees park over there.
I see people from Panera who are walking all day.
Well, I don't know if they do or not.
I don't know. That's what we're lacking.
I mean, just like Outback.
Great Escape has plenty of.
Probably love this for Outback.
But my thing is, why, why, if I'm okay with forty-five, why do you get it?
We're not, we have. Well, I, I, I. We have to give.
I know, but isn't that why we gave the variance? Isn't that what the variance is for?
We can't give variances.
We're not allowed to have variances.
That's where we're trying to get to.
You have to go to a different board.
You told us we could.
And there are variances to be beaten, but not from this board.
Is a variance been, have we seen that? No, we haven't done anything because, again, the mayor indicated that they would, they would look at the parking and we wouldn't have to go to the.
Let's see, some of it's written somewhere.
Well, this, what, what he cited there, Brian cited there, he talks about, however, in a mixed-use project, a lesser number of spaces may be approved by a planning commission. I'm not sure what a mixed-use is.
Well.
We're looking for KFC, we got multiple.
Starbucks.
That, that's the way this thing reads. We're allowed to approve of some mixed-use project, but why not?
Yeah, Mr. Cox, mixed use.
From a Great Escape, they have plenty of variance.
And I'm sure, I'm sure.
Oh, no, I was just going to answer your question, Mr. Cox. Mixed use, an example of that would be like the Starbucks Aspen dental that went in recently. It's one development and the two users in there are clearly totally different uses, a dentist and a coffee shop.
My, my whole point is, I don't know how long it takes for me to get Great Escape to say, sometimes these things involve a turn, sometimes, you know, you reach out to them. I don't know how long it's going to take for it to happen.
Mr. Plaid, we can't, if I'm reading this correctly, we can't approve it if it has to be. It's not a mixed use. Or to the, is it possibly a JED?
It was a JED, possibly.
We ever get, we never get any confirmation. Did we, what field, what variance process in this areas, did we, Chris? Haven't seen anything back either.
Forty-five, you need Great Escape for the forty-five.
No, no.
No.
Forty-five without Great Escape. That's what I'm saying, I don't care about Great Escape or Lowe's.
But that's just for their own personal parking lot.
Below what the code calls for.
And the forty-five is.
Yes, yes, that's the code.
And then Brian was thinking we could do it on a mixed.
Well, I think he's speculating.
Yeah, I think he was speculating.
Speculating on what the mayor might have been thinking about. I don't know what the mayor was thinking.
Just for the record, it is what he told us, I'm not trying to like, I'm not throwing the mayor under the bus.
No, it doesn't matter because he doesn't have a vote. So he could have told you the sky's green and dust.
I just, my thing is, we would apply for the variance a long time ago.
You could get the approval based on what you've learned today.
If, we just have to make this change on that.
That's, actually, that's a lot of change. For preliminary plan approval, these things are Brian's, they're our own issues that should be addressed in preliminary plan.
I thought of the social plan. What, what other issues that we, that you need to.
There's two pages of, there's three pages of.
Right. I, I was, I looked at it briefly and when I got it. I, I thought, I would have a chance to study it. I looked at those like more items like to go through the, the permit process.
No, no, it's to get plan approval. Listen to get plan approval. And all these things are listed in the code of things you have to have for a preliminary plan approval. It's plain as day. I can even find it. I don't look at that code book. I could find it, preliminary plan approval, here's a giant list, you don't have it. I don't know what to say. I, I, I will, I will not vote yes for a preliminary plan approval tonight. I will get a conceptual. Which really isn't approved.
Plan shit, stormwater management plan must be there, separate landscape plan document, you're applying. All of this.
He had a lot of those items there.
Well, you don't have the metric.
Yeah.
There's, there's, there's five-foot border of landscape things. It doesn't show that. Uh, there, there, there's a whole bunch of stuff that's not preliminary plan.
So if I was to just.
Much easier, you can't do it.
It would be us investing fifty to seventy thousand dollars in everything that you're asking for and then pot, and then come in front of you guys and possibly do all those items because you're looking for a civil engineer, he's going to have to complete all his, his stuff, architects, he has to complete everything this, and then put it in front of you and then God forbid you say no, and then what?
If it meets the code, we will not say no.
Say no, if it meets code, we will not say no.
I mean, in, in the concept, I think we're all thinking this is a good plan. We, we all think this is a good idea. We think the use is good. People are excited about it. We'd actually be, we'd be around town if we did. Engineering stuff and.
No, I don't think.
Walked out.
Yeah, it's act like that today. Well, some of that would be, because in order to get the photometrics, we have to get the engineer involved in order to get the landscape.
Certain aspects of it, but we're not going.
The stormwater, civil engineer would have to do all that.
And we normally do civil, after.
Well, yeah, many times the approval is contingent upon the engineer's comments, but I did have a few comments here that, that I think are applicable to the meeting. I don't know.
The stormwater retention is, we just looked at, we had that too, it's like, there's a stormwater there. So there's already a stormwater there for us.
Hang on a second.
A lot of the people already talked about, a lot, a lot of the comments that Brian and the I O have.
Yes.
But there's, there's others in here though, like I started saying.
Is this, now is this, the preliminary approval, is that more for a comfort level of view to, to, to make a financial investment moving forward? Or is it, you know, you cannot physically, you know, not legally continue on, make a purchase without this approval, Culvers?
I, I'm not so worried about, I got the answer, I didn't mind worrying about Culvers, yes, but at the end of the day, it's, it's my, my partner's financial risk. So Culvers is not being assigned. I, I think the, the only issue that would stop us from doing this is the parking count. That's really, if everything else is doable.
I agree.
It just has to be done.
Yeah.
It's the parking that is a yes or a no.
I agree.
If we don't get the forty-five, corporate will say, you cannot do this. And, and we will get the forty-five, but we don't have to change it. You just got to be okay with us only having forty-five. You guys could look, well, I know you have to go through the variance because unfortunately we thought we could approve that, but if you guys live with us and the forty-five, we will live with having forty-five. That's my whole point with this. And, uh, and so I don't know, you said, and I'm sorry for my ignorance, I don't know what the JED is.
And then, JED, it's a joint economic development district. This is all part of.
Another industry.
So they would have to approve the, the variance.
It is in the JED, yes, Mr. Pozar, yes.
They could probably give you a variance quickly. I think so. I don't, I don't know who they are even.
The last thing I want to have to do is wait on to knock on Lowe's door to get them to, you could ask the mayor how hard it's been to get ahold of, hold a Lowe's, right? I'm sure he'll tell you as far as the funding goes. That is not an easy, it, it sounds easier than it is, but at the end of the day, truth be told, I hate to say it, I guess, if some people want to come in there, they're just going to park anywhere and then walk in.
Right.
They're just, you know, and.
And apparently it looks like Lowe's doesn't, either doesn't care where they are in real.
Yeah, absolutely.
I guess if some of the detail.
That would be capacity if we were at forty-five. We want to, we want to.
I say we can do conceptual site man approve or take.
We could approve conditionally that they get the approval from the B Z A, but we, we have to get all the details.
The JED problem.
Yeah.
Oh, you got to get the JED.
Rather than B Z A.
We can get you all those items.
The JED may be a problem too.
I thought the JED problem, I thought we took a good one, the JED.
Why can't this give you conceptual proof?
I'll take, I'll take this, that's fine, that's based on we can get all the details you need. I'll take that, we'll get the details.
I, I think that.
I can see.
What they're saying is.
Lines.
That it, then we have to come back for preliminary.
Right.
Not final. Well, you, you could almost do that and, you know, almost in the same, same.
Can we start some minutes prior to that?
No.
No, no, we can't. Okay, so if we get conceptual approval, when can we come back?
So, I mean, the next scheduled meeting, you would have to have stuff in by, I'm guessing.
Friday.
Friday.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
We'd have to have, for the April meeting, we'd have, you'd have to resubmit by the twenty-sixth of March.
Now, I don't know what dates would work out, things like that.
Yeah.
Mr. Pozar, are you throwing it out? And I would do it as well, you know, if, if you had to schedule a special meeting, I don't know if the other three guys would be willing to do it, but, you know, schedule a special meeting somewhere along the line to try and, if you can get stuff ready for the, for the next meeting, because if Friday is too quick to get it turned around, um, you know, if there's a certain date that we can hit, we can, we've, we've done it before, we did, January, we did two meetings, we scheduled a special one. Um, I think Brian said is you can go from conceptual, you say you could go from conceptual straight to final approval.
Done before.
If you wanted to do everything, I think that's what he said.
I suppose you could do it, yeah, if, if the submittal had the appropriate amount of detail on it.
You mean, we'd have to go with engineering and all that, that, prior to that?
The two, wouldn't that mean? There's still engineering plan review for a lot of Joe's details.
Yeah, there, there are.
A certain level of comfort level, things can be done. You, you, that, that, that you'd have to, we have to, just thinking, you have to go straight to a final plan.
What would you propose we do in a special meeting?
We'd have.
We have to get our calendars out. We, we do it by email.
Okay. Although I don't know that it would be, it would probably be after the special, because actually, you know, it would be, a special meeting, the next, the April meeting, how, how much time do you need for a special meeting? Like, when does it draw you to have to be into your, your special meeting? Still a month ahead of time?
No.
So then why, why couldn't we submit, instead of the twenty-sixth, why can't we submit a week later and have it on for next month's agenda? Since it's already here, we're making modifications to it. It's not like you're seeing it for the first time. I'm just throwing it out there.
Submit in the first week of April or you're saying something like that?
Yeah, like, you know, we submit a week later after the twenty-sixth, if we can get everything else. That's, you know, it's tough for me to say because I'm not doing the technical detailed review. And the reason we haven't set up a meeting so early is that Joe's got to take it, he's got to spend, you know, the days on.
Joe. Joe left.
And Brian has to spend a, you know, a significant amount of time looking at it as well. Um, that's, you know.
That'd be a lot.
That, that I don't know. So I don't know when the special meeting could be. Then you probably, you could work through Susan and she could coordinate with these guys to see if there's anything that could be done to, to, for a special meeting. I think it's, I mean, it's, it's easy on us, besides we got the night.
What we don't do, like Keith said, I do the special meeting, just like.
Give it a little more time.
Yeah, give us the love to, because that would, and then you guys, why don't you just come back out again?
I prefer not to do a special, right.
As long as you're okay with getting separate emails of all the plans, because I usually send all the emails at the same time in one packet, the plans, so you'll get a later.
I'm certainly okay with it.
You'll get two packets.
It's for the guys who actually have to do the technical reviews. They probably have to check with the C E, if there's, if there's a date that they would have to have it on. If they can give them the next term week or something.
If they get approval from the JED for this parking issue, which seemed to be a sticky one, would that be enough for us? They say, the, the JED says, let's, we'll give them a variance. The only need is forty-five.
Whole bunch of things.
Well, I realize that, but if, if, I'm talking just about the parking, not anything else. If it's just the parking, uh, is, is JED approval enough or they have to, we do think we have to go to the R B Z A and the JED.
I would, I wish I had a solid answer. You asked if the JED does our appeals.
Yeah.
Board for this, for this area, and we've got to get an answer. It, it's, it's got to be one or the other, I think. It's either got to be the B Z A or it's got to be the JED. You, you might talk to the JED, whoever they are.
Mayor, mayor would push it kind of, I mean, it's, it's a board, it's, it's, it's.
It's, yeah, the, the JED is six members. It's the mayor, councilman Bilkey, councilman Ventura, and the three Northfield center township trustees are the six, uh, people who make up the JED.
They probably give you that variance.
The mayor who said that we should be fine, you may have proved today, so if he's on the JED, I feel, I mean, this is basically his, I, I mean, I.
If that's, if that's your big sticking area, you think that's the toughest.
And when you, where do they meet? Can that, what is that?
Well, they'll have to schedule a, they only have one standing meeting a year, so for this project, they will have to have a special meeting, uh, in which they actually will have to give, um, a, a motion for an approval or support of this project.
This is something they do on closed doors, is this not something that?
No, it's public meeting. It's held right here.
Would you like to stay at time, Keith, that's the meeting?
You certainly can attend if you'd like, yeah. So, um, I, I'm confident, and I don't want to speak for the JED board, but I, I think it's kind of a no-brainer. They're going to have to have a special meeting for this topic, Culvers Restaurant, and they'll have to, uh, have a motion to approve of the, the concept of the plan and pledge their support to our planning commission for the plan. And it may also be the venue to discuss the variance for the number of parking spaces, because like the chairman said, we, we don't have a firm answer on whether the variance comes from the JED board or from the Macedonia Board of Zoning Appeals. So I, I think that's probably a question either for Brian or for our law director to answer.
Sounded like a law director question, because Brian, you're saying that the B Z A approval, one or the other, one or the other.
Yeah, and, and it may even spell it out in the JED agreement, may even spell out how you get a variance, not sure, so.
I don't think it does.
John, can we go through your comments real quick?
Yeah, actually, that, that would probably be, if, for to that point.
Yes, please.
Yes, because my comments also, I'm sure you'll want to, uh, work in as you continue to move forward.
I've seen, I've seen both letters real quick.
Um, all right, I'll just, these aren't in no order. I'm just going to go right down. Uh, along the east side, there's a thirty-foot wide drainage easement. You actually do show it on our plan.
Yes.
Uh, usually permanent structures are not allowed in a drainage easement. Uh, it's good, you've got the building obviously clear of the drainage easement, so that's good. It looks like there is what I assume is the order board window is in the drainage easement and the patio is in the drainage easement, and I'm not sure what the makeup of the patio is.
Concrete slab, I mean, it's, it's, it's not anything.
So it's a, oh, so it's not a brick wall?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Yeah, Joe told, yeah, Joe.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, you can, it's fine.
Yeah, so, so the general rule is no permanent structures in the, the drainage easement. Uh, stormwater management is required, um, the usual stormwater management, detention features and what have you. Uh, and I'm sure that your engineer will, will guide you through that part of the design. And are you, I understand you're using Dan Barsakovsky, is he the engineer? Okay. I, I know Dan. He called me just a couple, late last week to let me know that he thought he was going to do this project. So that's nice. And Dan can reach out to me at any time if he's got any questions. The easterly end of the site here, the parking goes all the way up to five feet from the right-of-way line. There is a platted twenty-five-foot landscape easement along that easterly line. So the first twenty-five feet from State Route Eight has got to be grass.
Yeah.
So, uh, you'll want to work that change in. I think the drive-through lane just simply needs to slide closer to the building to meet that requirement. And in fact, I've got the plan here with me now. I can share, give it to you, I can share with Dan or whatever you want me to do. So, in fact, Dan probably should have that information so he can design properly for you.
So is it, is it a twenty-five-foot landscape area from the, the right-of-way?
It is, yes.
From the right-of-way.
It is, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Well, that has been, again, something that the mayor has indicated that we can, we can take it from the street just because of, we can't fit this building if we have that required. The project is that, if we do that.
That's a mover.
And that's, this is, this right here, this right here can, with two meetings with the mayor, that this is what he, he said we should do. And you were very clear, like Keith, he said, you're gonna change the bill, we, JED do this extra over here at the work.
Chairman, if.
No, okay, not, right, I'm not.
Yeah, i- if we need, I mean, I guess, A, we could verify that with the mayor, and B, uh, you know, I.
I mean, if we have to move this all the way over, the project's dead right now, I mean, there's just no way around it. There's just no, again, you know, the mayor has seen this, uh, not that that's an excuse or approval or anything else like that, but, uh, he has indicated that's what the other properties would end up being.
He's giving, what you're saying, you've got fifty feet from the, from the road.
Yep, he said that it's supposed to be a hundred feet, and, and it's, it's reduced for these properties because you can't get the hundred foot.
The, the building is supposed to be a hundred feet from the right-of-way of State Route Eight. Now, um, this subdivision has, I, I guess granted sort of a blanket, um, relaxing of that requirement, and all of the buildings are fifty feet from the right-of-way of State Route Eight. Chick-fil-A, Chipotle, and Great Escape are all within that hundred feet, so if your building is fifty feet from the, the right-of-way of State Route Eight, that's acceptable.
So that's what, that's what they're showing here, but it's not.
No, from, from the right-of-way.
Oh, fifty feet.
Yeah, not the edge of the pavement, so, the, the location of the building is not an issue, the, uh, landscape easement. You know, it, here's the thing, is it, it is a platted easement in a, in a plat that's recorded with Summit County, so there would need to be some sort of a formal, uh, variance in order to encroach upon that, then again. Yeah, and, and again, that, that would raise the question, does that variance come from the JED board or from the, our own city of Macedonia, BZA? And I, it sounds like the mayor is supportive of such a variance. But I, yeah, I'm not sure if these five guys can grant that variance.
You said something about this, now that I kind of recall, you said something else, but I, I don't think, I think you said, you know, well, we've given that before, but I'm looking at these other properties.
Yeah, the other properties are twenty, they have the twenty-five-foot landscaping. Yeah, so if Culver wants to deviate, you know, I, I think it needs to be done formally.
So you're saying we need twenty-five feet here?
Yes.
Twenty-five feet of landscaping, yeah.
Next to a possible with your site. As you were saying, I mean, that, that's probably the variance with, you know, BZA or JED.
That's, well, if we're gonna push these meetings through the JED board, we better have any detail exactly with this, or that, or that.
See, I, I think the notion, and I don't want to speak for anybody.
The mayor's on the JED board.
Yeah, he's actually the chairman.
I think the notion was that if, if everything looked okay, yes, you need details, but if everything looked okay, we would go full board and get all the details. But it seems like obviously there's a miscommunication between one and another of what we were supposed to present tonight.
Yeah.
So I, I understand what your code says and everything else like that, but because we've met with the mayor so many times and we had to go through all these exercises, that we felt confident that, okay, you guys look at this and say, yeah, we can live with this. And then we would go ahead and do all the engineering, get you a full set, and resubmit that way at the same time as, you know, submitting to the city, and you guys can look at all the landscaping, the lighting, and all that stuff that's really not gonna kill this project. So obviously, you know, it was a miscommunication.
I don't think any of that's gonna kill this, uh.
Well, to us, the, the parking is the biggest issue, and now this, this is a, this is something completely new. Right.
It's important, yeah.
This is something that we, we didn't know it was that, that drastic from.
If, 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 if the BZA JED board would grant that, I would have no problem with it.
None of the other, but further down the road, none, none, none of the other.
I'm looking at, you know, right here, you've got, there's the Great Escape, this is the right-of-way line there, they've got, for you, that's, that's got to be twenty-five. There's Chipotle, there's the right-of-way line, and you've got, there's, 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 that's got to be twenty-five. It's this and that, it's coming.
Where, where, this one, this is right here. It would be right there.
Right here.
And we're right again, there, traffic's gonna be five feet, five whatever.
Right.
That's what's gonna be, uh, the way I posted on any of the other.
Never approved anything, just, uh, stuff. I mean, I, I, I'm, for me, I'm, I'm watching the table. Feel it, I, I, it's just.
You gotta go to the JED boards.
Anything else you want to kill us with over there?
Trying to be as gentle as possible. Uh, yeah, a few more things here, I, I guess just for the record, uh, you do need a front sidewalk, that's required by the JED.
Yes.
Uh, outlaw, uh, development agreement, uh, we already talked about the traffic, I won't touch on that one anymore. Uh, there also is an Ohio Edison easement that runs along the easterly portion of the property, you've probably seen the, uh, the overhead wires. Uh, so whatever work you do there, uh, within that easement certainly has to conform with Ohio Edison's, um, rules of their easement. Uh, so you'd have to have, at some point, you'd have to have some correspondence with them. Uh, and then the last thing, uh, you know, certainly, eventually we'll need a detailed engineering review, uh, and like we mentioned already, you certainly need a JED board, um, an approval from the JED board.
Detail engineering, you already need for private site plan approval already.
No, that, that part, uh, in most cases, and I'm sure these five guys will agree, that, um, they're willing to approve, give a final approval pending a detailed engineering review. So, uh, the fine details of the plan can be worked out between myself and yourself and your design engineer after a final approval, but, uh.
So to get some clarification here, we're gonna make this change, there's some comments on there that will have some details, architectural details that you'll have to submit. Will you talk to the mayor about the, if it's okay to go through the JED for that twenty-five-foot issue and the parking issue, so we can get that in the clear? And then can we shoot for this April meeting? So they, they still have to figure out if the JED over, or. Well, how, how, if there's some sort of.
I'll set off the mayor, he might ask the lot department whether, would they have any authority?
And if we can get that cleared up, are, are you guys gonna reach out to the mayor about those two issues that I guess we need?
Chris, you writing all this down? Uh, Chris will.
Yeah, who's going to the mayor, that's the question.
Chris, Chris and Don here.
Uh, Chris will reach out to the mayor and we'll see him on Wednesday morning, so.
So, I mean, it's those two issues, right, so as far as that's concerned.
Yeah, those are the two killer issues.
Yeah.
Those are the two issues that kills this project, so, if that could be resolved.
Yeah.
Or, or at least indicated like, it's, yeah, it's not gonna be an issue, then we'll go through the whole exercise and get whatever else you guys need.
Yeah, parking and, and this right here.
Parking and the landscape setback, and, and the overall approval, uh, from the JED board, I think those are the three, the way I see it, those are the three items that the JED board needs to have, they need to provide some input on before the planning commission can give a final approval. And that is, that is spelled out in the JED agreement, because we just recently went through this exercise with the Dunkin' Donuts property, which is, uh, they're all, they're proposing to build a Dunkin' Donuts in the JED, on the other end of the JED, doesn't affect you, but, uh, so we've recently gone through this process.
And then, Chris, will you reach out to Frank, so we know if that's made clear, or want to talk?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk.
Yes.
Thanks, Frank.
Um, so last thing, if we could just, maybe end on a high note, um, I brought the samples, uh, if you guys can take a look at it and say yes or no, that would give us a chance to change them, we have to. Uh, but basically, everything is, is the same as, as everything else, here's the Aztec, which would be all the top material, um, and we've got to use the wood grain feature. Uh, all the trim work, uh, like around windows and things like that would be, uh, this wood grain, not this color, uh, just this wood grain pattern, uh, that would be the finer little things. The hardened board, which only is here and on the two little sides, actually that little piece right there, um, would be, we haven't gotten corporate approval yet, but it would be one of these three colors. Uh, I'm aiming for the gray, I think it works, you guys have the gray out there, uh, so that's the one that I'm gonna be shooting for, uh, but right now, they have stucco that's tan, and that's the rea, the reason why these are in play, uh, but I'm gonna be shooting for this one. And I think I can sell it, I don't, I don't think that's gonna be a huge issue. Um, here's the brick, we had a brick company go out there and match Panera, this is the one that they can come up with the closest. So if you guys don't like this one, I've got a backup one, uh, but this is the nicer one out of the two. Actually, I'm sorry, you have that one?
I'm sorry.
That's the, this, this one right here doesn't, I, I like the one.
Sorry, but.
That's the backup one.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, no, I'm sorry, no, this has brown, no, I'm sorry, I was wrong. So this is the first one.
I like that one better.
Yes, um, but this was the backup. So this is the one that we wanna go with. And the shingles up on top, uh, is that one right there, and again, that almost matches what's out there already. Um, I think there's one that has, uh, this one here, uh, so we'll, we'll build this one here, and this will be the pattern, you know, the style of the architectural pattern.
Yeah, looks like Williams.
I'm sorry?
That looks like Williamsburg slate.
Yeah, yeah, very close to it. So those are the, uh, materials throughout, um, at least we can end on a high note.
I think you're gonna be good with that.
I do have a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Uh, of course, once you get to the building plans, they'll have to be reviewed for current codes.
Yes, sir.
And we have a Knox box ordinance, so you'll have to have a.
We have two, we have two locations that we were gonna propose to you, but we can deal with that.
We can deal with that at a later time, and your patio's gonna need crash protection, it's listed in section three twelve of the fire code.
Yep, we have two ways of resolving that, that we would go over and do as well. I think you would like both solutions, so it doesn't matter to us.
I mean, like, uh, the one over to Winkin' Lizard, that patio, their flower planter is designed to take a vehicle in.
Well, we were thinking of, um, uh, like these dark spots are actually little two-by-two, um, columns that would match the brick.
Okay.
And they wouldn't be too far apart, but that would be.
Well, the bollards are required to be four foot on center.
Okay, um.
Would it, and most people put like a fence or something between them.
Yeah, we were gonna do like six foot with these concrete pillars. Okay, then we'll modify it, no problem. We'll end up probably going with the bollards then, uh, and, and, you know, closer to the drive. Okay.
Any more discussion? All favor?
All right.
Close?
We really want this to happen.
We do, we do, I saw, I was excited.
Do you, do you, do you have any reason that you think this won't happen? Is that gonna be my way, like, I wanna start keep this meeting?
Well, this, this is gonna be the big issue, you know, the, the, these two issues, the parking and this.
Yeah, everything else is.
I think everything else is just a little detail.
Yeah, if we can get over this.
Those things are, things that affect the size.
Yeah.
We gotta go to a lawyer.
No matter what. I don't wanna go to a lawyer, I don't wanna.
Well, thank you all for your time.
How fast is it, will you be able to get back to us?
It's gonna take some time.
Well, we'll hold a special meeting, I think, if, if it's absolutely necessary. Just to get through project.
But we'll, we'll decide when we'll meet, once we figure out the, the JED thing, then we can decide whether we do a special meeting or just from today.
Well, I don't, I don't think we're, I mean, unless a meeting is gonna be talking, unless we have.
And that's, that's, I think Suzie would have to coordinate with the technical working person, not us.
We could just come in and see if they hear.
Yeah, we'll, we'll. Well, if, if we don't have everything by Friday, I don't think we're gonna get everything by Friday.
Well, then we could see. But that's, but that's not us. We'd have to see if Joe and Chris could give you some more time, I don't know if that's, if it's gonna be ordinance, or if that's, if that's just, if that's our standard rule, because we wanna get the process, everything rolling into place. But if it's one of those guys, we'd have to be okay with giving them extra, or something like that. Talk to those guys.
That'd be great, yeah, 'cause there's stuff insurance engineers have to do, and I can't speak for them, that they're gonna drop everything and do this. No, no, I agree, that's, I can say I'm not gonna speak, but I can't tell that.
That's why if you speak to me, they could give us a little. So, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you again.
You can't say ease, but I think you could, one day, go ask them, freeze them, it's gonna be work.
I appreciate it, thank you, Chris, thank you, appreciate it.
Anybody have anything else?
No, I just. Good night, Chris.
Good night.
Good night, Sam.
We're motioning, we're.
How are you doing?
All favor?